Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee meeting. It's Monday, August 16th, 2021. Meeting starts at 6:01 PM. Roll call, please, Ms. Garcia.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Sheehan? Ms. The Fave?
Present.
Ms. Brunell?
Here.
Ms. Tensley Williams? Ms. Burks?
Here.
Ms. Feliciano-Sins?
Here.
Mr. Willahan?
Here.
Mr. Callamore?
Here.
Mr. Krishen?
Here.
If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God,
Thank you, everyone. I just want to give a friendly reminder that Governor Baker had signed a law, a bill into law on June 16th allowing public bodies to hold remote meetings through April 22nd of 2022. We did put up a Zoom link where members of the public can access the meeting this evening. As you can see, the members are here today and we are practicing social distancing as well as wearing our masks. Also, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. With that said, is there any public comment? So hopefully even in the homes, they can hear us now and we can get confirmation on that. So we did do roll call, everyone. We did do the Pledge of Allegiance. And we were going on to public comment, so we started first with Dana Altshuler. I hope I said it right. I apologize.
Yeah, that was perfect. Oh, I can't hear myself, which sounds really weird. Can you guys hear me? All right, cool. There's a strange echo back. How long do I have? A half hour? Just kidding, two minutes? All right, start timing me. I've got a lot to say. Thanks for having me here tonight. I appreciate everyone's time. I'm Dana Altshuler, the former Ethnic Studies Director and former teacher in Holyoke Public Schools. Some context for who we are as an Ethnic Studies community. Holyoke Ethnic Studies is one of the first programs of its kind in the nation and is the first anti-racist academic program of its kind in the New England region that offers classes and programming to students in grades seven through 12. We are a program built with love and care over the past eight years. We are students, teachers, partners, curricula, classes, after-school programming, dual enrollment opportunities, and alumni to teacher pathway. After three months of meetings, compelling letters from students, alumni, and partners, and powerful testimonies shared at the June School Committee meeting, Holyoke Public Schools has made close to no adjustments to address our concerns. Starting this fall, Holyoke Ethnic Studies will go from having an Ethnic Studies Director position with a designated 40 hours per week for Ethnic Studies programming, department head who has been designated to less than four hours a week to support our Ethnic Studies program while also teaching four classes a day. One direct result of the district's decision to terminate the Ethnic Studies Director role and to restructure the program is a fracturing of the Ethnic Studies Department. Without sharing all the details here right now, let it be known that in a typical year, the Ethnic Studies teachers have 50 hours of PD, professional development, and collaboration time. And this year, we will lose 18 of those collaboration hours. Our concerns are many, to say the least. One, we have 11 new teachers joining the Ethnic Studies cohort this year and a total of 20 teachers in the Ethnic Studies program spanning nine schools across the district. Two, we expanded back into all middle schools and will be offering Ethnic Studies courses to students in and the Newcomer Academy at Holyoke School North. Three, we're an estimated 1,100 students taking Ethnic Studies in Holyoke Public Schools this year. Who is supporting these 11 new Ethnic Studies teachers with Ethnic Studies-specific pedagogical and curricular support if not an Ethnic Studies Director with the time, knowledge, and capacity to do so? How do we responsibly grow a program without the capacity to support teachers? It is three months after this top-down decision was made to restructure the program and eliminate the Director role and still no one has shared the answers to these questions. For those of you who attended the June 21st School Committee meeting and if you did not, you can watch the recording. District leaders assured that the newly appointed Ethnic Studies Department Head in lieu of a Director would have a "significantly reduced course load" so that the majority of the role would be spent on coordinating the program. This could include things like supporting 11 new teachers, creating beyond-far-walls classroom experiences for 1,100 students, for example. Yet this summer, one month after declaring a commitment to Ethnic Studies and a significant reduction in course load for the Department Head, the district did not follow through on their word. So we are here and will continue to advocate for Ethnic Studies in Holyoke until we are heard. One way that we are advocating for Ethnic Studies is by seeking out grant opportunities that could help us fund a district Ethnic Studies Coordinator position and bolster this critical program for young people in Holyoke. Superintendent Soto, we urge you to support Ethnic Studies not just in words, but also in action. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you very much, Dana. Our next for public comment is Danielle Hayes. We're going to bring you on in and if you could just state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Danielle Hayes. Can you all hear me? Give me a thumbs up if you can. Great. My name is Danielle Hayes. I'm an Ethnic Studies history teacher at Holyoke High School's Dean Campus. It's my fourth year teaching in Holyoke and my ninth year as an educator at high school level. I'm here to speak to the impact of restructuring Ethnic Studies on teachers and students. Though the intentions of district leadership may have been good, the impact is that our classroom teachers will have less support and our students will have fewer opportunities to go beyond the classroom, to go on field trips, to host community events, to work with expert scholars and community mentors, and enroll in dual enrollment courses. If you ask students, these are the experiences that reignite their passion for learning, that support them in having ambitious dreams for themselves and seeing themselves and one another as brilliant, capable, and connected. From the teacher perspective, for me personally, having an Ethnic Studies Director helped me create a plan, creative, and engaging projects and then see them through, right? A lot of times you have big dreams in August, but to see them through requires a great deal of support and behind-the-scenes work. Having that Director role allowed students in my classroom to create murals, to visit college campuses, to host a youth teaching, to welcome district leadership into our classrooms, to give a state-of-the-school address. We hosted community experts who reflected our student body. And having a robust cohort of colleagues that I met with almost weekly also has helped me sustain my passion and commitment to this work, build my skills as an educator, and reflect on how to keep growing and improving. Under this new structure, however, we would only meet as an Ethnic Studies cohort three times during the year, August, November, and January. And the leadership role would be changed from a full-time position to a single free period a day. I have applied to take on the Department Head role for Ethnic Studies to help bridge the gap until a Director role is reinstated. If I were to this role, as Dana mentioned, I would have approximately 45 minutes a day to devote to this work, less than four hours a week. Simply not enough time to sustain such a robust program. And of course, like all teachers, I work beyond my scheduled hours. But is it enough for what our students deserve? Superintendent Soto, we urge you to support Ethnic Studies, not just in words, but in action. Thank you.
I want to keep trying to press my unmute button because I'm thinking I'm on Zoom. I am so sorry. But thank you so much, Ms. Hayes. The next speaker that we have is Paul Schroeder Rodriguez. And if you can just state your name and address and then you can go ahead and give your public comment.
Yeah, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to participate today. My name is Paul Schroeder Rodriguez. I'm a member of the Holyoke Ethnic Studies Cab, which is the Community Advisory Board. In that role, I have been amazed at the great work that Ethnic Studies has done at the Holyoke Public Schools. And I'm going to be summarizing what Dana and Danielle said in Spanish for those in the audience who prefer that. I'll begin with a little bit of my background. And thank you for listening. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Paul Schroeder Rodriguez y soy miembro del Comité Asesor del Programa de Ethnic Studies en Holyoke Public Schools. También soy profesor de cine y literatura latinoamericana en Amherst College y Boricua de nacimiento y crianza. Con raíces en Huánicá, Puerto Rico, de parte materna, y en Alemania, de parte de mi padre. Menciono mis antepasados para honrarlos y honrar su lucha por mantener viva la cultura puertorriqueña a pesar de más de un siglo de colonización política, económica, y cultural tanto en Puerto Rico como en la diáspora. A fin de cuentas, de eso se trata Ethnic Studies, de romper con el pasado colonialista. Y quisiera leer una ocasión de un libro que creo que puede ayudar mucho en este contexto. ¿Y qué dice? We know how to be racist. We know how to pretend to be not racist. Now let's know how to be anti-racist. Para resumir lo que ha dicho Dana y Danielle, básicamente, junio de este año, se nos dijo en este foro que la administración apoyaría Ethnic Studies. Hace una semana nos enteramos que, a pesar de esa promesa, se ha hecho todo lo contrario. Es decir, si antes la directora del programa de Ethnic Studies tenía 80% de las horas dedicadas al programa a su administración y mejoramiento y 20% de su tiempo a la enseñanza, esos porcentajes se han invertido con esta nueva propuesta. 80% del trabajo que hará Danielle será enseñar y 20% será administrar y mantener la calidad del programa de Ethnic Studies. Esto no es sostenible para mantener la calidad del programa de Ethnic Studies. El resultado de esta acción serán las contrarias. Se irá desmejorando el programa. We urge you to support Ethnic Studies, not just in words, but in actions. Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. So moving on from public comment, we're going to go ahead and move into student showcase. Which one were we going to start with? Was it Jericho? 2021 Jericho Summer School?
Yeah, as part of our student showcase today, we wanted to showcase two of our summer programs. First, I want to bring Jill Hughes on to showcase the end-of-school-year students, Josiris Rodriguez and Henry Ramos. And then we will move on to see a program that we held at McMahon. If Jill is available, please.
Thank you, Anthony. Hi, everyone. I'm Jill Hughes. I'm the Director of Intensive Services. One of my roles is coordinating extended-year services. Tonight, I'm proud to welcome a few students and staff as well to speak, briefly speak on our extended-year program and just share some of the positive experiences that they've had this summer. I don't know if we have a video from a fourth, a fifth grader, Josiris Rodriguez, who wanted to be here but was feeling a little apprehensive about speaking in person, so he has a video he wanted to share in his absence.
Hi, everyone. The things I liked at Jericho this summer were bingo, swimming, boating, fishing, and the hikes. I can't wait to go back next summer.
We also have a young man named Henry Ramos, who is from our Transitions Academy program and he is here tonight to speak about his experiences this summer. Is Henry on yet? I know he's, oh, there he is. I see him. Hi, Henry.
Hang on. There we go. All clear? Everyone hear me good? Okay, so my name is Henry Ramos and I am a spokesperson for Jericho, here to speak about my experiences and a wonderful time that I've had there. I've been going to Jericho since I was third grade, fourth grade, so it holds a pretty special place in my heart, all the good times that I've had, memories and whatnot. I've done a lot of things there, helping a lot of teachers, the two directors, Mr. Bowler and Mr. Britton, with any work that they require me of do. I helped a lot of kids with work, moving stuff around. It's a pretty welcoming place. All teachers, staff, everyone, they're all lovely, easy to get along with, and well, simply just a welcoming place. Yeah. Sorry, just a bit nervous. Some of the things that I've done there is help out with the boating and fishing area. Kids go to the pond, fish, or catfish, frogs with nets. There is an amazing hiking trail out in the back with cardboard cutouts of different animals and whatnot. Beautiful, assuming with trees and everything. Further up the road, there is the Ashley Reservoir that teachers can go up, you know, with permission and if they had a clear schedule, to go out there and both see the reservoir. There's also a hiking trail over there as well, so more nature. We also have the swimming area, of course. It's a hot summer day. Teachers go up there, swim, kids, everything, you know. So that's my experience there.
Thank you, Henry. You did a wonderful job. The last person I just wanted to introduce is Ms. Liz Jayzab, who is a lifelong Holyoke Public Schools educator. She's worked in our Transitions Academy program for many, many years and she just wanted to come on in and share her experiences as an educator. Is Liz on? I know she was in the waiting room.
There she is.
Am I set to go?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I'm Liz Jayzab. I was a site supervisor for the Transition Academy. We really, really concentrated this summer on working on social skills, communication, being out in the community and providing some leisure activities that the students could use as they go to adulthood. We had some students at various sites this summer. We had some students at the Dean's School where they are putting together books. I guess it is quite a project. So they have been doing books and I think they will be done in a few more months. We also did deliveries of food to houses of needy families in Ohio. We worked at Dunia School where they helped with janitorial work and being in the classrooms with some of our other students. We did a farm-to-table unit this summer where the students participated in doing, going to local farmers' markets and going to local vegetable stands and they would purchase vegetables and things. And we would teach the kids in cooking club of how to use some of the local produce, which we think is really important for the kids to develop good nutrition. We also, of course, everyone's favorite was to go bowling, bowling for dollars. We did two trips a week to bowling and the kids had a ball. We also participated in the print shop. The print shop is very, very locally Holyoke-based and they do, they printed signs, they printed t-shirts, they printed mugs. They did a lot of just really fun projects. I, we had music therapy once a week where the kids really, really got into getting in a great mood for the rest of the day and really a calming force for many of our students. And we were also very lucky to be able to Zoom with a fitness instructor once a week where she taught us some exercises that we could do through adulthood. And we also worked on a nutrition book with her so that our kids, along with food to table, were also very conscious of nutrition because we think it's very important. So we just had a lot of fun. I think the kids had a lot of fun. And I thank Holyoke for allowing us the pleasure of having this school. I look forward to any of you coming down to visit us. We are open. We have an open-door policy. And we love visitors, so please, if anyone would like to know more about the Transition Academy, they are more than welcome to join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Jayzab, Henry, and obviously Josiah, his video. Does anybody have any questions, comments regarding the Jericho Summer Program? Ms. Tensley Williams?
It's located at the Jericho House.
Jericho, yep, on North Hampton Street.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a question, Mr. Callamore? I was looking at those eyes, I was wondering.
I just wanted to thank you, Henry. I know you were a little nervous. I'm a lot older than you are and this is still nerve-wracking for me, so I just want to commend you for being brave and speaking, I had the opportunity to, and Josiris, you as well, thank you for that video. It was great. This summer, I had the opportunity to visit the Transition Academy. It was a beautiful day. There were so many students there. Everyone was engaged in learning. The program is just unbelievable and I really appreciate all the hard work that the coordinators put in and all the staff that provide this great opportunity for our students.
Thank you so much. Our next student showcase is the 2021 Summer Learning Academy.
So I'm going to ask Michelle to come off camera. Michelle is our Director of Extended Learning and she's going to just tell us a little bit about the program and show us a video.
Hi, my name is Michelle Macklin. I am the Director of Extended Learning and Professional Development. I oversee summer program, an after-school program, and also vacation academies. This summer, we offered students a project-based learning experience in our elementary program. The day was highly engaging and we let, had the students have a hands-on approach. The day consisted of a math block, an ELA block, and then a project-based learning block that tied back to the ELA lesson. And in the afternoon, students engaged in enrichment activities. Each of the sites had a theme, so the lower elementary had a sea theme and then the upper elementary studied the Titanic and underwater exploration. So this video is a little clip of McMahon's program.
My favorite part of doing this project is working together. It's like, it's like being with a family. Mi parte favorita es hacerlo como familia.
This program is important for students this summer specifically because it was during the pandemic and it was the first time we were really back in person. And so we wanted to make sure that we not just brought learning to the students, but a social, emotional aspect along with project-based learning.
We drove about Titanic and we did the up part, like from the side, the ride part of the boat, and it was very kind of fun.
So we brought in the Jason curriculum, which is a lot of project-based learning, but we also embedded ELA with the assistance of the ELA Director so that the students got both ELA and science that was hands-on.
So this summer, we worked a lot around studying the Titanic, its history, ocean life, and even a little bit of the Nautilus exploration. Students had a lot of hands-on work opportunity that was connected to their reading and writing class and they even got to interview some of the experts within the science field.
And when we go out on the ship in the middle of the ocean, our goal is to go see things that have never been seen before. And as a scientist, I get to ask questions about the world, like what kind of animals live where? What are the shapes of the seafloor underwater? Did you know there are big mountains and big valleys and canyons?
So all summer, we've been learning about underwater exploration, like the discovery of the Titanic by Dr. Robert Ballard and the expeditions of the Nautilus crew. So here, the students have taken their Ozobots to simulate an AUV, an autonomous undersea vehicle. And the Nautilus crew actually has two ROVs, remotely operated vehicles, that do a similar function. They'll go around on the ocean floor, taking samples, exploring different things. So here, kids have made different undersea features like hydrothermal vents, different animals, different plants, and letting their robots explore.
My friends and I, we did all of this amazing part and I think we all really like it. So I think another time, all the kids need to do it and they need to have fun.
I just wanted to say thank you to Valerie, Michelle, Eric Ferreri, Samantha, for putting this program together for our students. I had the opportunity to visit both of these programs and it was amazing how engaged the students were. They were all having a lot of fun while learning at the same time. And I just thought it was a great opportunity for our students to come together, socialize, learn, and have fun all at the same time. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Is there anyone else from the committee that has any comments or questions? No one else? Okay. Thank you, both groups, for coming out. Both amazing showcases today. And I do want to do a clarification because I said Josiah and it's Josiris, so I do want to apologize for that for the student. I want to make sure I get their names right. But thank you, Ms. Macklin. Thank you, Ms. Hughes, right, Jill Hughes, for everything that you guys are doing for our students throughout the district. And our next presentation is Mr. John Foley from the Center School.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, John.
Oh, okay, so sorry. I think that I'm here to talk about the dedication of the 1985 Northampton Street building to Mary Burks, who is, you know, longstanding member of the Hoyoke community that has been, you know, by history, you know, an important figure in education in the city of Hoyoke and throughout Western Massachusetts. And we are, you know, planning to put a plaque on the wall at the entrance to the building at 1985 Northampton Street. So that plaque's been ordered, it hasn't been received. But as soon as it is, it'll be installed and we will, you know, send out notices and have a little ceremony there at the time that that happens. I don't know beyond that what, I had an invitation to come to talk to the committee, but I, I don't know if you have any questions about it or want to participate or if anything like that. I don't really know. I'm happy to be here.
Mr. Foley, first of all, I want to thank you, obviously, for dedicating that building to Ms. Burks, who's a very instrumental advocate for students of Hoyoke. Does anyone else have any comments or questions about Mr. Collmore?
Did this come to the committee beforehand? It has to be discussed and voted upon by the, by the school committee.
No, for clarification, that is not our building. It's the Blessed Sacrament Building. Right now, the Hoyoke Public Schools does rent out some space to do the middle school dual-language program. But that building technically belongs to Mr. Foley. But being that we're renting the space, obviously, he came to us so that way, letting us know that he would like to dedicate that building in her honor. And obviously, and you know, so it's just, just kind of like notifying us and including us in it, which was very much appreciated. Ms. Tensley-Williams?
When I saw this, I was very happy, very excited about it. Mary Burks, she was a wonderful person and we all loved her very much. And so I think that's a good thing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, yeah, I agree that Mary Burks, I know Mary when Dennis was just a young pup. And, you know, not only was she dedicated to education, she was dedicated to just the humanity, regardless of age, regardless of gender, regardless of ethnicity or race, regardless of language. She always had a vision of idealism as she tried to live that life. And I would certainly be honored if you would invite me when you do that. I would love to be able to be there for that presentation. And I thank you for honoring her.
Absolutely. And we, I did reach out to the city council also and they were going to participate as well. You know, because the local committeeman, Bartley, is who I spoke to. But he said that the city council was also interested in participating. So I think he'll do it from that end as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Shan?
Yeah, I was going to thank John for doing this. I mean, I know it came a couple of months ago when he mentioned to the Burks family and I learned from them being done. And it's such a tribute and an honor to a woman who impacted, I mean, not only Hoyoke students, but impacted so many, like, students and young people across Western Mass in the work that she did and her dedication as an educator. And she, I will tell you, so probably early on when I started on the school committee, I would often get, I think it was my first interaction with Mary, I'd often get some good tips or feedback when she'd come to a meeting about different things. And I would say to Liz LaFond, after like the first time I had someone passionately talk to me, I said to her, I said, "Who, who is that?" Because I didn't know who that was. And she said, "Oh, it's Mary Burks." And she says, "Oh, it's Dennis's mom." I said, "Why isn't she talking to him?" I mean, and I've since learned and I mean, I really appreciate what she did to, to help me. And I will say that I'm probably a better person because of the feedback that I got from her because she, it did not matter. She always gave you her opinion and usually her opinion was the correct way it was coming from after you saw it her way. So it's a great honor for her and her family.
Absolutely. My memories of her seeing each other in the aisles at Stop &amp; Shop. And that's where we would have our conversations and my husband would continue the groceries and meet me at the, at the aisle to go pay. But yeah, this is quite the tribute. I know we have Mr. Burks here this evening in the audience as well as Ari. Mr. Burks, did you want to share something?
Thank you. I'd like to thank John Foley and the rest of the Center School staff for honoring my mother, Mary Burks. Of course, I love her, she was my mother. But outside of that, she has touched so many people in different ways. She dedicated her life to social justice and education, especially special education. She sat on many boards and volunteered for things like urban ministry, the homework house, the Carlos Vega Social Justice Fund. And worked, of course, for the Center School. And it was what she did. And she was passionate about those things. I'm incredibly grateful to John for honoring her in this way. There is no, I think, better tribute and way to honor her life. It was her work, it's what she did. And she touched so many people in the work that she did in education and social justice. My family will be forever grateful for such a touching tribute to her life. So thank you again and thank you to all of you for your kind words. And, and letting John do this and coming here and recognizing what he's doing and the way that he is honoring the work that she did in Hoyoke and throughout Massachusetts also. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burks.
I want to thank Dennis for saying all the things that I should have said when I started. I'm very, very bad at these kinds of things, I'm sorry.
You're okay, Mr. Foley. I just want to make sure that you, please do send us the invite because we would be honored to be there and be present and be of support to the Burks family when you do do the, the presentation or...
Yes, we absolutely will. We'll have a ceremony. And I just want to say that the people that I work with are much more prepared and efficient than I am. So it'll be all done very well.
Well, thank you for coming here and for actually coming to the school committee. Even though we really don't have a vote on this, it's not our building. But the fact that you came to shows the respect that you have for, for the Hoyoke School Committee and we thank you.
Well, we are big partners with the Hoyoke Schools, so anything we can do to help, always. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? So that closes out the student showcase for this evening. We're going to go ahead and move to communications and reports. And that would be Superintendent Receiver, Mr. Soto.
Great, thank you. Today, I wanted to focus on providing the school committee with an update on our return to school, school plan. As you all know, we are coming back to school a week from today. Our teachers and staff are going to be coming back for professional development tomorrow. So we're really excited. If you could move us to slide seven? Oops, sorry, that's not the slide I wanted. I'm looking to get to the, the one that shows the agenda, sorry. Right there. So the next slide, please. So we wanted to talk about the purpose and the core values that went into developing the, the return to school plan. We're going to provide some health context and then key highlights of the plan. And we will highlight where we're at with transportation, what's going to be happening with fall sports, and some policies that we're going to be implementing for, just to make sure that our staff are safe and then students. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this plan, we developed it with, as most, every decision that I make is with the students-first mindset. And when we, when we developed this plan, that was the most important thing is to make sure that our, you know, we put the students first, the student safety and the staff safety. We wanted to articulate to the general public and families what safety procedures are in place so that we can have a safe, positive, and productive school year. And most importantly, we all know that, you know, remote learning didn't really work for our families and for our students this past year. While there were some bright spots overall, we know that we want to have our students in person. They really need that interaction with their peers and with their teachers. And this plan was developed to, to ensure that we can maximize uninterrupted learning for all. So we want to start the year in person and hopefully stay that way. And we recognize that this is an evolving process. So we're constantly getting feedback from the Board of Health. We meet with them on a weekly basis. We get feedback from the, from DESI. DESI puts out guidance every so often. The last time they put out guidance was last week. And we're constantly monitoring CDC's guidance as well that they put out. So we know this is a challenging time for everyone and there's not one perfect solution. But the safety of our students and staff is at the core of developing the plan. We know that academics are important and it's going to be our focus for next year. But we also need to be aware of any mental health, social, emotional needs or behavioral needs that our students might need this upcoming year. And also, we have to make sure that our students that need the most get the most. So those are our core valuables, those are our core values. Moving on to the next slide, please. So one of the important factors that went into the decision to wear masks is our vaccination rates. So this slide here shows what our vaccination rates are in comparison to the city's vaccination rates. So you can see that the state average for people in Massachusetts that have at least one dose is about 69%. And people that are fully vaccinated is about 62%. When you look at Hoyokes, we have 55% of our, of our residents receive one dose and only 49% are fully vaccinated. So you can see that, you know, when the state makes recommendations, they're, they're making their recommendations based on averages. And Hoyokes averages are lower than the state average, which, which was a contributing factor to our decision to wear masks. And we did not just only take that health data. So we looked at CDC's recommendations, we looked at DESI's recommendations. But one thing that was really important to us was what our families wanted. We did a survey with our families and I'm happy to report that we got about 1,030 respondents. And that's a lot of our families considering that many of our families have multiple students in our schools and we have just over 5,000 students. As you can see on this slide, there was a wide representation here too of grade spans. So it wasn't just our high school families that responded or our middle school families that responded. You can see that 35% of the respondents were, were high school aged, had high school-aged students. 27% had middle school-aged students, 32% was grades three to five, 34% was grades K to two, and 12% were pre-K and K, which was our lowest set of respondents. We got a really good sample size of respondents and a wide, a wide range of grade spans as well. Overall, the results of our, was overwhelmingly that our families wanted to see a mask mandate in our school. So 85%, when we asked if, if they want, if students should wear masks, if they're unvaccinated, 85% of our families said that they want to see masks. And for, we asked the same question about students who are vaccinated and 72% of our families said they wanted to wear masks. They would prefer to see those students that are vaccinated, even though they're vaccinated, to wear masks. In our survey as well, we, we asked families whether or not, we wanted to gauge whether or not families were going to be getting vaccinated or had children that were vaccinated. And I was pleased with the results here as well. We asked, "Has at least one of your children received the, a COVID-19 vaccine?" And almost 30% of our families said yes. And then 36% of our families said no, but they do plan on getting the vaccine when available. And only 33% of our families said, no, they don't have, have the vaccine and no, they don't plan on getting the vaccine. So it's a large percentage of our, our families that plan on getting either have their vaccine or plan on getting their, their children vaccinated, which is an important part of our return to school plan. Some key highlights, I mentioned that, that we are going to be going back, as everyone knows, five days a week in person. There's not going to be a remote option at this point for, for Hoyoke. It's, it's not, it's not something that would even be allowed at this point. We are, we do have a layered approach to health and safety. So it's not just one thing we're going to be doing. So one of the things we are requiring, as, as mentioned, and I, we released this information last week, we're requiring masks for all, for, for all students and staff while indoors, except while taking a mask break or, or while eating. And another thing we're doing?
No, go, finish off, no, finish off here. And then when you're done with that slide, I do have someone who, who does have a question.
Okay. And we are, as part of our process, we are encouraging as many people to get vaccinated as possible. There's two things that CDC said in their guidance is that they recommend masks and they recommend proper air filtration. And thankfully, the city invested heavily in our Hoyoke Public Schools' air quality. We have a air scrubber, a HEPA air scrubber in every single one of our classrooms. The recommend, the CDC recommends at least three air exchanges per hour. And these scrub, air scrubbers alone that are in each one of our classrooms gets between four to six, and four to six air exchanges per hour. And when you combine that with other measures like opening windows and our regular ventilation systems, we, we far exceed what, what is being recommended by CDC at this point. We are, yeah, so you could keep that slide up. Because I'm just speaking to these. We are, um, yeah, so you could keep that slide up, um, it, cause it, I'm just speaking to these points. We are um, also gonna be encouraging physical distancing when possible. Um, so wherever possible, we're gonna maintain uh, three feet of space. Um, you know, I, I did some walkthroughs of the buildings today. There's gonna be a lot of, a lot of classrooms are gonna be able to maintain uh, this three feet of distance. And then we're also doing uh, routine COVID testing. So this is formerly known as um, as uh, pool testing. Uh, families that have, have signed up and staff that wanna sign up can go to the nurse. Um, they'll be able to get tested up to two times a week, um, which is gonna be, which is gonna help um, identify any students or staff that, that may be um, asymptomatic, not displaying symptoms. Um, this is just another measure that, that we put in place in partnership with the state so that uh, we can keep our students and, and staff safe. And of, of course, our facilities team is gonna continue to uh, with their enhanced cleaning. We're gonna make sure that all high touchpoint areas uh, get regularly cleaned and disinfected like they have been. And our amazing nursing team is gonna continue to contact trace. Uh, that was one of the hardest things that our, our nursing team had to go through. But um, I think we got it down to a science now and we're, we're way better prepared than we were uh, prior to the pandemic to, to be able to uh, handle the amount of contact tracing that we're gonna have to do.
So we, we do have a couple of members that have questions. So first was Mr. Sheehan.
Yeah, can we go back to the slide with the pie chart, um, with the vaccination request? So, I guess looking at this, have we actually um, like cross-reference these numbers to the records that we get in nursing?
What records that we get in nursing?
I mean, we get medical vac- like, people turn in vaccine records into our nursing department. Do we know that twenty-nine point eight percent is, are we pulling it from that? Or are we pulling this from someone responding and saying, yes, one or more children?
We, we haven't been collecting student vaccination data. I mean, the, the vaccine wasn't available for ages twelve and up.
And should we be?
So, I, I just wanna, so as part of the, the health information that they require from the schools is just your basic immunizations. So it's gonna be like your MMRs, your DTAP, uh?
Well, I think meningitis falls, meningitis falls on, it's not a basic immunization.
I, I don't even know if the HBV's on there. Um, but it's basically those main ones and the, the varicella or chickenpox unless you have it. Um, you have some form of documentation indicating that you had it. Now, with this going on now, is there a possibility? I don't know if that's something at the state level that they would wanna start including as part of the requirements for health information?
Well, so I know that some districts are, um, turning in cards and that's what guided districts on decisions too on, on this. So I'm just wondering, like, are we going to track? That's like actual vaccination numbers when we track, we track so many other things? I mean, and it's something that a nurse could easily track. I'm not looking for even how many per school, but I just mean a percentage of our students who are eligible that have received a vaccine. I, I can't imagine that wouldn't be really good information. I mean, if we had a, let's say we had a school that was at ninety-nine percent vaccination. I mean, it's just, i- it's different things I think to look at when you're contact tracing, when you're doing things like that. So I just, I, I can't imagine that it wouldn't be valuable information when we track so many other things. Um, and had the ability to track so many other things within our, our, our nursing records. Um, and I know like, that Cynthia has talked about that in the past of other vaccinations, that they can pull that information. Um, so it just seems like we'd want that, that data. So then for the people who selected no, but I have a plan to have my children get the COVID nineteen vaccine, like what, what was our next step to that? Did we take all of those people and say, okay, you have a plan, well, this is where you can do it?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we did was we partnered with the Holy Oak Health Center and we did hold a clinic at Holy Oak High. Um, we, we, it was pretty much all hands on deck in terms of communicating it. We tried really hard. I did a, we actually did a press conference.
But did we target that thirty-six percent specifically?
We targeted all our families. We sent that information to all of our families. We didn't, we, I mean, we didn't exclude them when we sent that out, encouraging the, the, them to go to the clinic that we were putting on.
Okay. I guess it's just one that more focus, like these are people who say they want it. Are we making sure they're getting it?
I mean, we can't, we're giving them the information on, on the clinics that we provide. Um, so they, they're getting the information. Um, we can't make them go.
And then what do we, have we done a survey of staff to see staff vaccination rates?
Um, that, I know that Cynthia was working with, with Beth. Um, I'm not sure what the results of that are yet. You know, s- staff haven't come back yet. Um?
Aaron Linville.
Yeah, Aaron. Yeah, I was just gonna ask if Aaron can come off camera and, and speak to that, please.
Thanks. I have a couple of the responses and um, Devin, if I missed one, please let me know. Um, one thing, in terms of this slide that's up, the people who haven't had their children vaccinated yet, but might, some of those actually, yeah, some of those kids might be eligible, but some could also be like the mom of the eight-year-old who's not ready yet. So um, or who's not eligible yet rather. So it's, it's a combination. What, one of the primary reasons could be age for those kids not being vaccinated. We can use the um, the, the data available on the Massachusetts like COVID equity um, um, website, um, which is included in the return to school plan, um, has the vaccination rates for children in Holy Oak. So that, since most of the ki- about eighty percent of the kids in Holy Oak, a little bit up, close to eighty percent attend HPS, we can use that as a decent proxy, although I understand your specifics about specific individuals. We have that thirty-six percent of, of twelve to fifteen-year-olds and forty-five percent of sixteen to nine-year-olds in Holy Oak have received their vaccination. So we could use that as an approxy, approximation for um, kids in HPS. And then to your last question, Devin, about vexer, vaccination rates of staff. Um, when Cynthia pulled this in, we, we surveyed people in uh, May and it was over ninety percent had gotten, who responded to the survey, who had gotten their vac- that, their vaccine or would um, or by the end of that month, like in the next month, would be fully vaccinated. And we had a high degree of respondents to the survey. That being said, we do have new staff members, so that's not, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have over ninety percent right now. But um, we did have a high degree of um, uptake for that. And we could always get back to you after um, if we, um, after we survey again. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you, Ms. Linville. Um, I'm gonna go with Ms. Rosalie Tensley-Williams.
Um, Mr. Soto, you said seventy-two percent of the students have been vaccinated?
No, I did not say that. Um, what I said was uh?
Oh, oh, not, I'm sorry. Seventy-two percent of the students, no, you said are, did you say are vaccinated?
No, I said, uh, what I said, uh, seventy-two percent was, um, was that when we s- when we surveyed our families, um, we asked them, should students who are vaccinated wear masks indoors? And seventy-two per- percent of our families said yes.
Now, there are people that have gotten COVID even after they got the shot, but they were saying that if you do get it, you won't be as ill. Um, that you won't be as sick and you will get over it, you know, quicker than if you didn't get the vaccine. So that's what I heard.
That's what, that's what the science is suggesting, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley-Williams. Ms. Burks?
So I was looking at that data too and I was actually gonna make the same comment. I think a lot of that is the kids that aren't eligible yet. Um, but are we coming up with a plan for when they do become eligible, that we can support another vaccine clinic or? And then my other question is, who is our Holy Oak Public Schools physician? I know at one time, it's been kinda all over the place since Dr. Abrams, um, and we haven't had a stable physician. Um, so I'd like to know who our school's physician is? And, you know, what about having um, our school's physicians start having information sessions with families to try to get them to understand the benefits of the vaccine? Um, but we have a Holy Oak Public Schools physician as far as I know. Um, and we should really be utilizing them and making them come front and center and really under, you know, explaining the benefits to families. Um, so that was just another piece. Do we know who that physician is or no?
Yeah, the, his name is Dr. uh, Liao. Dr. Liao is our physician. Oh, sorry. Her name is Dr. Liao. Um, and we have uh, uh, we, we have been trying to communicate the benefits of, of getting vaccinated. Uh, um, I, you know, the, we just did a press conference uh, last week at the Holy Oak High North uh, campus. Um, we had with us uh, Jay Brians from the Holy Oak uh, Health Center. And we had um, we had um, uh, representatives from our, our Board of Health, our local Board of Health, Sean Goncalves, uh, where they, they did mention that to the public. Um, where the, and I know the Board of Health themselves, they're happy to post any sessions um, and provide any information to family. That's, they, they've been really advocating for uh, folks to get the vaccine and, and they post information on their website, uh, and looking for opportunities to just educate people. Um, they could always call the Board of Health. But yeah, we, we can certainly uh, continue to, to continue with that effort. I think I wanna, I wanna answer your other question too, that if and when the vaccine does become available for under the ages of twelve, of course, we, we will be continuing to partner with uh, Holy Oak Health Center and, and offer clinics in our schools. Um, one, one clinic that we're gonna be offering is gonna be at the back-to-school celebration. That uh, that is a, one that we work with the Holy Oak uh, Safe Neighborhood Initiative and, and at Casey. Uh, we, we often get about two thousand families to attend that event. So we, we thought that was a great opportunity to partner with Holy Oak Health Center and provide a vaccine right there at the back-to-school event for families that want it.
One more question. Um, so this is the first time I've ever heard of this Dr. Liao um, at all. Really, we haven't heard. We heard um, Dr. Abrams, then Dr. Gottsagan, and now I'm hearing of this Dr. Liao for the first time tonight. What is this doctor? Is it, is she a pediatrician or is she gen med? I mean, is she an adult practitioner, um, family medicine? I mean, what? What kind of, what does she practice?
Yeah, I can, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can certainly provide it unless um, Mary Ann has that.
Yeah, because this is the first time I've heard of this provider and all previous providers.
It's a new person.
Right, they should be pediatricians. So I just wanna make sure that that's what we have on, on board. Is a pediatrician and not just, you know, an adult med specialist that works primarily with adults and doesn't understand the needs of kids, so.
I think I might have found her. Dr. Monica Liao Chang, uh, the pediatrician in Holy Oak out of Two Hospital Drive. Hospital Drive, I believe.
Yeah, we can get, certainly get that information. Um, it's with the Holy Oak Health Center, so
Yeah.
Uh, who we normally contract with. Um, so we'll, we'll provide a, a profile of.
That'd be appreciated, cause we've asked for a while now about a pediatrician, because we haven't really seen anybody since Dr. Abrams.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did sign the contract over the, over the summer, so
Okay.
I mean, it, it, this is fairly new in terms of us being able to secure one um, and settle on the one that was gonna, I know Cynthia was working on it all year and, and finally was able to get one that would work well with, with the, the school department. So we'll get a profile on that person for sure.
That'd be appreciated.
Could I comment on that?
Thank you.
Could I comment?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, just, just so you know, I mean, uh, she actually has been coming to some of the meetings I've been having, trying to work on reducing asthma in the city. Uh, and she's been pretty active there, but I know she uh, just was getting this position probably in the last five or six months. Uh, but up, prior to that, she was still working, knowing that asthma was a significant problem in the city. She was working with the, my Public Safety Committee and the City Council to try to uh, work with landlords to try to clean up the air in, in apartment buildings primarily, but also in the apartments themselves, so. Uh, and she's provided some good information and I know she's been pretty active doing that, so. Just based on that, I, I think, you know, her heart is now, her, her medicine's there, but her heart's also there.
Yeah, and it's Holy Oak Health Center that she works with.
And she is a, a pediatric specialist as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Brunel?
Thanks, Mildred. Um, I have two questions, well, maybe three. So, one, I'd like to say I'm happy that we are not doing virtual learning. Um, but that leads me to the question of what if a child, eh, like a whole classroom ends up quarantined? Like, what are we gonna do to support those students while they're not in the building? Um, which leads to my next question and hoping that our students are not gonna be on devices at, like, at all this year? Like, I don't want my son worrying about bringing a laptop back and forth, worrying about a charger, worrying about headphones. I'm hoping that it'll be like much more engagement with the teacher. So, you know, on one end, we all want that, but then how do we support our students if, if and when a quarantine does happen? Um, so yeah, those all kinda tie together.
Yeah, I, I think that with our new to, state's new test and stay protocol, that there's gonna, it's gonna be less likely that an entire classroom is gonna have to quarantine. Um, cause when, when we identify close contacts, as long as there, they were uh, masks and, and three feet, um, they would be able to, to exercise the, the test and stay protocol, which means they could, as long as they're not symptomatic. Um, if they're displaying symptoms, obviously we want them to stay home. But if they're asymptomatic and they were identified as a close contact, um, then they'd be able to stay in school and receive testing for up to five consecutive days. Um, but, but still stay in school. Um, that's gonna allow us to keep more kids in person, but it's gonna be cases, obviously, if, if a student does contract uh, the virus or, or if, for whatever reason, um, someone is displaying symptoms and has to quarantine. We're gonna uh, make sure that they work with their teachers. Uh, their teachers will be sending work home and following up. We are looking into, for, for those that are extended periods, uh, we are looking at uh, tutoring. Similar to like, uh, uh, prior to COVID, when, when, if there was a case where a student had to be out for an extended period of time, we're gonna uh, make sure that they get some work and that they're engaging regularly with their teacher. As far as devices, our plan is to be in person, just like we were prior to the pandemic. Um, I'm not gonna say that computers aren't gonna be used at all, like, there's still gonna be um, teachers that, that, that use uh, computers for assessments, that they may use it for different activities with the students. Uh, but we are returning to regular in-person. It's not gonna be streaming or the student in front of their device every single day, all day.
Okay. So I'm gonna just throw like a worst-case scenario at you. Let's say it's Wednesday and the classroom teacher tested positive for COVID. Clearly, her entire classroom is pretty much a close contact. Um, no, just the front row maybe? I mean, she's walking across the classroom, she's interacting with her students, hopefully. So, let's say the teacher's out and then three students are out. Is that teacher gonna have support for these packets for the students? Um, do we have, you know, paraprofessionals in, in place that plan to step up to help the classroom when the teacher's out? Um, do we have a influx list of, of um, substitute teachers when and if this happens? I just wanna be prepared so that way, if, when it happens, we kind of have a plan in place rather than have it happen and be like, oh my gosh, what are we gonna do? Um, cause I can, I mean, I'm sure at least some point between now and Christmas, a teacher's gonna be out. Um, so just, you know, getting those supports lined up, figuring out ahead of time with the principal, or I don't know how we're gonna figure it out, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm gonna be completely honest, it's, it's not, there's not an easy answer for that. Um, one thing I can say is that our principals have been amazing and, and flexible and our staff as well uh, during, you know, what, what has been one of the most difficult times to, to, to teach. Um, and they're gonna continue to be persevered, they're gonna continue to be flexible, they're gonna continue to adapt. Um, but uh, staffing is a concern. I mean, uh, it's, it, the, the, and it's not just a concern in Holy Oak. I'm telling you, it is a concern in Holy Oak, but it's also a concern. And, uh, for every superintendent that I've talked to and every school business administrator I've talked to, their staffing is a concern. Right now, we are at about 90% filled. We'd like to, you know, our goal was to be filled at, uh, to be 100% by August 1st. Uh, unfortunately, that's not where we're at. Luckily, uh, all of our core classrooms are filled right now. The vacancies that we do have, um, aren't like homeroom classrooms. But yeah, it's hard to find substitutes. It's hard to find, um, you know, uh, that, that's gonna be an issue that we're not, just have to be really creative with. That might mean, you know, uh, I, I kind of drew a, a line in the sand, um, this year when we were developing the budget that, you know, academic intervention teachers are going to be academ- academic intervention teachers. They're not gonna be used to cover classrooms. If the situation presents itself and that's really the only option for a school, then that's what's gonna have to happen. You know, we really want our coaches to be focused on, on coaching and developing teachers. But if they have to cover a classroom because something like this happened, we're gonna prioritize having, um, quality people in front of our kids.
Ms. Burks.
So that one kind of led me into, that little conversation led me into three questions. One of mine was the same as Erin's, which was, we clearly, looking at, you know, the, the data that we were given, we don't, we're short teachers. So what's gonna happen if our teachers get sick? Making sure that they also have the supports they need. So thank you for answering that. If we have to pull people, you know, Central Office has a lot of people that are educators. And if they need to go cover a classroom, then that's what we need to do. So another question that I have, you brought up computers. So I just want to make sure that like the new paraprofessionals, are they all gonna have the computers again this year like they did last year? To make sure that they're all covered, the teachers as well? And also make sure that like, you know, all the new hire paraprofessionals and teachers are also gonna have what they need to be able to support the students. So I want to make sure that those laptops are gonna be going out to them as well, um, again this year. Is that happening or no?
Yeah, we got all brand new, uh, laptops for all of our teachers. And, um, all of the pairs that are gonna need devices, well, we have plenty, you know, the teachers have been recycling theirs and they're, they're gonna have them. If they need to use them, yes.
So I know last year we pushed that it's not like the need basis as it is, like every staff member should have access and have a laptop. And I'm hoping that we're going with that philosophy again this year because that's where it was last year. Like, every staff had one. If they needed it, it was there, but like they all had them. And I just want to make sure that everybody has the laptops they need, whether it be the paraprofessionals or the teachers. I want to make sure that that's happening again. So that's.
Yes, every staff that needs a device will get a device. You know, I rely heavily on the principals to let us know. But we work, we work with our principals. If, if there's staff out there that, that, um, that need devices, that don't have them, that need it to do their job, we're, we'll make sure that they have them.
Okay. And yeah, I'm, I'm not a fan of the word needs. Like, just to be honest, like I don't like the word needs because someone could, you know, hypothetically need it, but it should just be available to all staff. Like that, that's my thought. Is, it's something that all staff uses computers throughout the day with their jobs. Like, there's very few teachers and paraprofessionals that don't need access to a computer. And they should have what they need to be able to support and educate our students. And I, so I don't like the word need. I want it to be more like, it's there. Point blank, if they need, not if they need it, you know, it's 100% there. We have one for every single staff. It's just there. Um, so that's just me. Like, I don't.
When you say staff, do you just mean teachers and pairs?
I mean, the people that are directly working in front of our, our students, you know, that we have.
That's why I say when, if they need it, we'll, we'll provide it. I mean, our, you know, our food service workers don't, don't really need computers. So.
I'm talking about the people that are directly educating our students. I just want to make sure that they have all the supplies that they need.
Yes.
I don't want it to be a change from last year, you know, just because we're more in person. I think that, that things are gonna come up and that we really need to make sure that they have what they need. Whether some freak incident happens, we need to be prepared and ready. And I just want to make sure that we always are, like Erin said, when it comes to teachers. So that's important to me. And then one of the other questions that I have, as we're going through this, mask breaks. How are you doing mask breaks? Like, and on like the little people level and, you know, even on the older kids level. But what are you gonna do on days that it's raining or it's too cold and they can't go outside for mask breaks? Like, how is that gonna be handled as well?
Yeah, each school is gonna be different. So, um, obviously every student's gonna be taking a mask break when they're eating breakfast, when they're eating lunch. Um, but we've instructed principals to come up with, um, a process to identify a space within the building that, that students that are asking for a mask break can get it. So it's gonna be, you know, like I said, during breakfast, during lunch and upon request. So if a student does, um, need the mask break, we're gonna identify a space either in the classroom or in the building where they, where they take the mask break, um, if the weather is, you know, i- if, if it's raining outside and it can't be outside. But principals are in the process right now of, um, develop, working with their beings of management and ops and their, uh, their, uh, instruction teams to make sure that they, they develop those plans for, for next week.
And then, all right, one more question. I'm going back to it on the teaching staff thing because this is another piece that I have another question about. So we got, we got the vacancies, right? So we have this list right here, but what it doesn't tell us is vacancies in regards to paraprofessionals? Like, how many openings do you have in regards to paraprofessionals? Do we know? Because the other piece that I'm worried about is like special needs students that have one-to-one paraprofessionals, whether or not we're gonna have floats and subs able to cover those students if the need comes. You know, the same way that we're gonna need the coverage for substitute teachers, um, I also want to start thinking ahead in regards to paraprofessionals because one-to-one families, special ed students' families, we rely 100% on our one-to-ones. Um, and we rely heavily with giving us the information that we need to make sure that our, our kids are safe. So I'm really, I, I'd like those numbers as well is to just have an idea of, you know, do we have excess paraprofessionals? Do we have floats? Do we have per diems, um, substitute paraprofessionals? Like, do we have a little list going there to make sure that we're covering all students?
For, um, the list that I showed the school committee, uh, we can provide backup details to that. But that is a great point in terms of, um, you know, it's something that I'll work with, with Mary Ann, to see if we can overhire and, uh, some paraprofessionals to make sure that we have sufficient, knowing that, you know, they might be pulled for different things. You know, I thi- I think one of the things that has been expressed, uh, the biggest concern, um, around our vacancies is, uh, the, the psychologists. So we just had, uh, two of our, you know, two of our psychologists that were bilingual psychologists are no longer with the district. They retired. And that's been, that's just been a, a, a challenge. You know, it's tough. You know, uh, we just haven't been able to fill those positions and, um, you know, they're, they're, the psychologist positions are, you know, they're in really, really high demand. So, and so much so that it's, it's even hard to, you know, sometimes we partner with outside organizations to provide these services to us. The outside organizations that we have, they're, they're also tapped out in terms of, uh, being able to e- even support us. So it is a challenge. It is a concern and we're working really, really hard to try to get to 100%.
I'm just hoping we don't violate any laws with like, you know, we have special ed students that require one-to-one paraprofessionals and that we're not gonna then take a paraprofessional and use it as a group. Or, you know, when that's actually against the law and it's against their IP. So I want to make sure that we're mindful enough to have the staff that we need to make sure that we're all, we're doing what's right for the kids, but we're also not violating laws by, you know, taking a one-to-one and making it a shared. So.
So before I move on, um, to the next person who had a question or a comment, I just need to make a quick clarification for the public. We are not on Zoom. This meeting is not being held on Zoom. We are here in person and reason being that we are here in person because I honestly believe that if we are asking to send our kids back to school and to go through this, having to be three feet apart, six feet apart, masks on all times, then we need to be doing the same thing. We have to be feeling the same thing that the students are gonna be feeling, right? So masks on for so many hours a day, I, I'm already used to it. It's like, it's like a fashion statement already. But I don't want it to be continued on social media stating as if we are not meeting in person. So we have to figure out a way that this, the way that this is done where we have, um, the cabinet from the school department doing it through Zoom, where that's not what's always being shown, um, on the TV or wherever else it may be showing, um, because we need the public to see that the school committee has been here. We have been meeting in person. We met in person back in June. We weren't here in July and now we're back here in August. And we will continue to hold our meetings like this every single month. Okay? So hopefully that's a clarification and they can go ahead and update and edit their post. So the next person is Mr. Sheen.
Thank you. Um, are we not being seen?
Like usual, right?
Okay, okay.
It's on TV, right? Like a normal broadcast?
Yeah, okay. Well, that's for the public participation. So I guess my question is back to this topic is that what we need to stress again, and we've talked about this in the past, going with attendance. Like, we need to push the fact that if your student isn't feeling well, that your student needs to stay home. And there, we really need to be very mindful about anything being too punitive with staying home. Because if a, if a, a child is not well, and I, I don't want a parent determining, well, is it the flu? Is it a cold? Is it COVID? Is it, is it whatever it may be? Like, if they're not feeling well, just to stay home. Because yeah, I know that we were all home this past year and that's why we had lower flu rates and all these different things that contributed. More people getting the, uh, the flu shot and stuff, but we had almost insignificant occurrences of it impacting classes. This is things like, we really need to push that. Like, if you're sick, do not come to school. And not in the past, like with the what strive for five or whatever we did, less than five absences, like. Okay, was that what it was? Like, if, if you think that you may test positive for COVID, like, don't come into school. Like, and I think that that's the most important thing to push and that, that educators are supported by their, um, administrators, that it, that students not coming to school because they're sick, that they aren't coming in. And I know that kids are gonna be chronically absent and those kids need to be followed up on. Like, it's two different things. But this legitimacy or sending a nasty letter to a parent because they kept their kid home for the 10 days and just it wasn't coded properly or something didn't happen, isn't helpful. But like, we just have to be really, really diligent and vigilant that we are doing that appropriately. Because I don't want a parent who is making the decision, their child may truly be sick and not send them in getting some sort of nasty letter when it's not a chronic absent, it's 10 days because they're in quarantine or it's because they've had an exposure or whatever it may be. And staff for that, that fact too. Like, same thing. Like, I don't want someone being reprimanded or it affecting anything around their employment or, uh, whatever it may be. Ability for promotion because they've been absent for 10 days because they had to quarantine or had to X, Y, and Z. They were exposed to a family, whatever it may be, that they have to stay out too.
But I will also add to that, that it just might not only be 10 days in a given school year. It could happen in multiple occasions, occasions, you know? It could just so happen that you've been exposed at five different incidences, um, or five different opportunities. So you might have to quarantine each of those times, especially with the contact tracing and you were close contact, no masks, whatever. So, but that's also something that needs to be looked at at the state level and being that we're under state receivership. That shouldn't be something that's held against us either when we have students that are exceeding, um, the timeframe of how many absences they have. Now, I know you did mention the tutoring. Now, if we're looking at the tutoring pre-COVID, that's not really a pleasant experience either. And I know from personal, first you have to wait like 10 days, right? And then you get what? Two hours of tutoring? And that includes the drive of the tutor leaving her house or his house to go to the school to wait and get the material. So maybe 45 minutes are now gone. Now they're driving to the child's home. And then they see the child and they're like, here you go. So that's, there's your two hours. And so that's not even beneficial. So we've, when we're gonna talk about tutoring, that's something that we really need to improve ourselves on. Like tutoring's tutoring. You're here to help the student, to provide them, um, the support that they need and understanding whatever is being sent home for them to do. And your time starts when you get to the door of the, of the home and versus when you leave your home. The other thing that I wanted to mention, I know we talked about the vaccines, those who have been vaccinated. I know for us, if someone says that they have been, but they lost their card, if you did it in the state of Massachusetts, it is on the database. So if you do know their name, their date of birth, you're gonna find out whether or not they really did get vaccinated. So I don't know if that's a pathway that the, the public schools want to go, the nursing department wants to go. It is a lot of work. But if you really want to know who did and the, and the families are saying, yes, they did, and they're willing, I don't know if you're gonna have to sign, have them sign a release. I know we do sign a lot of releases. I'm just not sure which ones. Then that's another way of knowing who exactly has been vaccinated, what is your exact percentage per school, per grade? And go from there. All right. So, oh, one other thing. Were you gonna talk about transportation? Or did you just lump it all together and you're gonna start talking about it in a minute? You go on with your presentation.
So Devin, thank you, uh, for stressing that. I appreciate it. I was trying to speak to this slide and there may be a, a few things that I had left out from our full plan. So I did want to go down real quickly. We talked about masks. We talked about encouraging the COVID-19 vaccine. We talked about the pool testing or the COVID safety checks that we're gonna be doing. We talked about proper ventilation, physical distancing as much as possible in the classroom and lunchroom. Placing students in cohorts when possible to limit cross, uh, group exposure. So we are asking our principals and to, and, and our schools, uh, um, and, and teachers to, when they're going to, you know, we're gonna be eating lunch in the, in, in the lunchroom in many cases, that, uh, we're able, the most important thing is that we're able to contact trace. So we're able to know who was sitting next to who. So some schools may be setting up assigned seating in the lunchroom or we may just be doing one classroom at a time to make it easier for the Board of Health and our nursing department to contact trace. That's another measure we're putting, like Devin said, stay home when sick. That's, we're asking and telling our families and our staff, stay home when sick. We're asking them to do, uh, use a daily screening tool. And we're at, we're also, uh, employing what we did in, uh, when, when we did have, uh, students in, in school this past, uh, spring, which is, you know, just educating our students on regular, uh, hand washing, sanitizing, you know, educating them on, on social distancing, letting them know to stay home when they're sick. And then like we, we talked about, uh, the use of PPE as well when, when required. So just wanted to make sure I covered all of them. Next slide is the, I wanted to report, we did hold that clinic at Holyoke High School North on Wednesday. Next slide is the, I wanted to report, we did hold that clinic at Holyoke High School North on Wednesday. We only had 15 people who had initially signed up. And I was, you know, we did a press conference the day before and we were able to get 37 people vaccinated. We tried really hard to get as much exposure as we could to let families know. You may have seen on social, on, on our social media, Arthur Lunderton, the grade 11 Dean student. We asked him why he got the vaccine and he said, "A lot of my friends are taking it and I heard that they recommended it. I wanted to get it too, just so I could be extra safe with them." So thank you, Arthur. Our grade 11 Dean student. And thank you to the Holyoke Health Center as well. Visitor policy, we are going to be limiting access to visitors. We do know, one of the things that we have learned from this past year is that meetings can be held effectively remotely. So that's going to be our first choice. But in the event that we do have to have visitors come in person, we just going to make sure that they're logging into the building so that we know who was in the building and who they were close contacts to in the event something does happen. And we are asking them to wear masks and stay, and not set up a meeting to come to the school if you are sick. So that, that's part of, just yet another part of the return to school policy.
So real quick on the virtual remote meetings, IEP meetings, if the family does not have access to internet, are we taking other measures to ensure that the, either if it's a manifestation hearing, it's an annual meeting or it's a special meeting to discuss, same thing goes with the, oh, what's that other one prior to the, to the IEP? It's another, no, it's another program before going to to an IEP student. Student, no. I don't know, but it's another one. It's another one.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, there, there will be some families that, that have to come in for in-person meetings. We are just going to be requiring them to wear masks and ask them not to schedule it on a day where they're sick.
Okay, so those at least will be held for those that don't have internet access. Those will be held in person. Any 504 meetings?
Of course.
Building-based support team when they meet with you before, yeah, okay.
This next slide, I know it's, it's difficult to read. If, if you're in front of your TV, you should be able to read it. It's hard to read it from here. But this is our learning acceleration plan or just a high-level summary of our learning acceleration plan. For those that don't know, the state put a lot of resources into partnering with an organization called TNTP to provide a template and a roadmap for all districts to use in their learning acceleration plan. So we, we definitely took a look at that roadmap that TNTP put. And, and we create, you know, we tailored it to Holyoke. So we, we know that recovering from learning loss is going to be one of the top priorities as we enter the school year. It's not going to be a one-year recovery. You know, we know that this is going to, this is going to take time. It's, we're not going to address every single issue that, that came from the pandemic in one year. But we have developed a learning acceleration plan. Our focus is going to be threefold. We want to ensure that every child feels a strong sense of belonging and support as part of the school culture. This includes strengthening our communication and partnerships with our families. We're going to have to monitor their understanding through assessments. We're not increasing the number of assessments that we're doing. But we are going to be doing our assessments with our students, really gauging where they're at in their learning and whether or not they're understanding it and then providing the necessary supports. Our school leaders are going to be setting up data teams in this first quarter. And we're going to be meeting weekly. The data team, each data team is going to be meeting weekly to review assessment data, take a look at students' work and then make sure that, you know, the, the lesson planning and, and the students that need more get, get more. They bucketed into four phases. So right now we're in the planning phases and when school starts, we will be launching. But one of the things that is going to be really important is just to really monitor the progress that students are making, which is Phase Three. And then lastly, at, towards the end of the year, just really assess where we're at and, and what's, you know, double down on the supports that students need so that we address any gaps that we identify during the school year. Like I said, it's going to be a multi-year approach. But I'm confident that our, our building leaders with the relay training and our excellent teachers are up for the challenge. And this is just going to be a guide to how we get it done. Transportation, so far this has been the best year in terms of planning for transportation. Schools had access to bus routes at the beginning of, of August. That's, you know, I remember one year I was up till 4:00 AM sending emails to principals lists of 4:00 AM the day school started. So some principals got, I think it was in 2017 where we had an issue, they, they received their bus list the day of school, the morning of school. We were able to provide those bus lists to schools at the beginning of August, which is a record for us. Part of it is that we, we took over the routing from the, we used to have Durham do all of the routing. And it was just really hard to, you know, we would get them information. They would do the turnaround time. Information would slip through the cracks. This year we said, you know what, we're going to take it. Whenever we have changes, we're going to make them, send them to you. And I think that process is going to be tremendous in terms of us being able to deliver real-time information to families and, and get things to happen a lot quicker. We did, if you keep in mind, we did get the city council to vote on extending our contract. We were able to negotiate a three and a half and 3% increase for the next two years, which is excellent for the city. And for us to maintain, you know, have a smooth start of the school year with the same vendors that we had had. Our eligibility criteria is going to remain the same. So it's still K to five is one mile or greater. Six to eight is one and a half miles or greater. And then nine to 12 is two miles or greater. And then obviously anyone who has transportation in their IEP will also receive receive transportation if needed. So right now, as it stands, we're transporting about 550 students that have it in their IEP and then about 2,000 students on our big buses.
I want to talk about transportation. So K to fifth, one mile or greater. Now with the construction going on on Lyman Street, it's going to take probably another five to 10 years. Are we still providing transportation, being that the little bridge is still closed?
Yeah, we, so that area is determined to be a hazard. So even though it falls within the one mile, there's not a safe route for the students to walk. So we do bus students that go to Kelly from, from the Lyman Zone. We actually have two buses that go there because there's so many of our students that live there.
Okay, great. And then the other thing, Vanpool. Let's talk about Vanpool because that's really for out of district. And do we also?
Vanpool does our wheelchair transportation. They do some of our McKinney-Vento transportation that is out of district. And then any, any, any students that live outside of the district but attend Holyoke Public Schools that were required to transport, Vanpool does that for us as well.
So in following the guidelines for prevention of, of COVID, like, are they supposed, are they also required to be wearing masks? Like the, the driver, the, the person that's, whether or not students are in the vehicle?
When students are in the vehicle, they have to be wearing masks.
So one of my biggest?
Doing the transportation, yes.
So one of my biggest concerns, right, is even if there's no students in there and you have the driver and just the person who's going to pick up the students or the, the monitor. So if they're not wearing their masks while they're driving around to get to the net, to the first stop, whatever, there's a potential for exposure because they don't know where the other one's been or who they've been with. And now they're going to go pick up the student. And now they, they show up with their mask on or they put it on, like, that's a problem. So how are we, how are we working with Vanpool to ensure that? I mean, I thought they had cameras. Isn't that what they came and told us? That they had cameras, they can see everything that's happening. They're monitoring the speed, where they go. But on North Hampton Street today, turning on South Street, they had no masks on. So I mean, that's just, like, if I saw it, like, are we sure that they're not doing it all the time? So now that puts our students at risk and then so I think we need to have a meeting. You have a meeting with, with Vanpool and ensuring that they put measures in place that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, we'll make sure that while, while they're doing their, their runs, they're wearing masks. The science has said like that you can't get better air, air circulation than, than what's on buses. You have a moving vehicle with windows open. Anything in the air is going to be refreshed like really, really quickly. So as long as students are wearing masks when they board the bus and when they're sitting in the bus, I, I think that the science suggests, you know, this is what experts have said, that there's very little chance of exposure as long as, because, because the ventilation is so high with windows open and traveling, that, that it's, it's very unlikely that that's how they would contract the virus. If they're wearing masks, the windows are crap.
Well, Vanpool is a van. They don't open up the windows. What windows are they going to open? It's one of them Chevy-looking vans. Not when it's closed, they're not opening it. But I'm just, I'm just letting you know what I, as I'm out doing my visits, I observe my surroundings and that's what I'm observing. So I, again, my child takes one of those van pools. And I observe as well. But every time they show up at my house, they know they have their masks on. I don't know what they're doing prior, but my kid always goes with his mask. I mean, he is like Mr. Infection Control. Mr. Sheen.
We contract with Vanpool to do runs. We can't control everything that they do 24/7. I mean, they could have many other students on that that are not our students as well. I mean, I even think they could have mixed students on one of our runs with other students in other places on them. There could be students who can't wear masks that are on, on the Vanpool with them as well as our buses. I mean, there are medically needed students that aren't going to be enmasked. But as long as they're mitigating, using enough mitigation factors, like opening the windows they can open and what I want, am more concerned to hear from Vanpool is instead of making sure that the driver has a mask on their entire shift, but are they, are, are the insides of the vehicles being adequately cleaned at the end or the start of a shift? That's what I'm more concerned about than, than a, than a mask at 10 o'clock in the morning with no, no students on there. It's more like, are the vehicles ready for students when they're boarding and when they're on there? Because I think that Mr. Soto makes a good point about contact and exposure, about how you can be exposed. So the cleanliness, I think, is more important than what, because we can't control that. I mean, we're not going to get a Vanpool employee fired because they weren't wearing a mask when no one was on the van. I mean, it's only those things that we can, that are within our realm to control and, and to be able to, to control that. And it's unfortunate, but it, it's more the prevention strategies that they are using and how they are working with a student who may not be wearing a mask properly and what, what they're being, what, what tools the drivers are being given to instruct students, like wear the mask over your nose, do it, do it properly, those types of things if they're going to be in them rather than what they're doing. It's all the other prevention strategies when other kids are in that van with them.
So it's not about getting them fired, but it is about education. And that's, and it's just making sure that we are explaining to Vanpool what the expectations are as well when they are transporting our students. And it would be interesting that to also look at is data as well. Like, how many bus drivers are out because of COVID? How many students may have been exposed? I think we should be collecting data through all aspects, even within classrooms or whatever. So we can look and see what, what measures could have, could we have not met to prevent the spread or, or what we need to institute to prevent it? Right? Or so that it doesn't occur again. And it, so it's, it's not about firing people. It's about educating people and reinforcing what needs to be done in order to make sure that everyone is safe.
So just a quick update on fall sports. We, we do currently plan on participating in fall MIAA sports. I will say that, and that's in our, that's in our return to school plan. We are waiting on guidance for MIAA. You know, they've been saying that there will be further guidance released. But right now for outdoors, for outdoor sports, there, there isn't a requirement to, to wear masks right now. This Wednesday, something should be coming. Okay, their board's meeting Wednesday, so we're going to, thank you, Devin. We'll, we'll make sure that we review that guidance and adhere to it. Hopefully, it doesn't impact our ability to hold sports. We do have, our fall sports will include JV varsity, JV and varsity football, varsity field hockey, JV and varsity girls soccer, JV and varsity boys soccer, golf, freshman JV and varsity girls volleyball, boys cross-country, girls cross-country, unified basketball and cheerleading. So we are, are very excited that our students will have the ability to do that. And, and as long as Wednesday's guidance doesn't prevent us from, you know, allows us to do it, we're going to continue that as planned. Football is going to start Friday, August 20th, so that's this Friday. And all other sports are going to start on Monday, August 23rd. I think you're two slides behind. One more, there you go. So Monday, August 23rd, all the other sports are going to start. There's a full tryout schedule that's posted on our athletic webpage. So anyone seeking information on tryouts, please visit the webpage, our, our website on the athletics page. We are encouraging, you know, I know how much, what sports have done for me in my life, pretty much saved my life. And I know how important it is to, to students that, that really love, love sports to continue to engage in that. So if you need information, please.
I wasn't paying attention. Mr. Willehan.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Soto. Do you have enough coaches this year for these, these sports? I know there was a problem a couple of years ago, filling the head coaches and the assistant coaches.
Yeah, I haven't heard any concerns around there not being enough coaches. So I'm going to assume yes, but I will follow up. And if, if, if it's, if, if there is a concern, I'll be sure to update the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
I saw in the budget book, Mr. Soto, there's going to be arts and also music. But that was good.
Yes, yeah, we, we're, I mean, we, we will have access to music and art in every single one of our schools. That is a challenge, the staffing challenge that I, that I spoke about earlier. There's some, music positions are tough to fill. So we have a, we have at least one music vacancy. We have at least one art vacancy. So that's going to, that's going to, obviously we can't find the teacher. It's going to be hard to provide those opportunities for kids. But our, our principals are working really hard to, to fill those vacancies. It's just. But our, our principals are working really hard to, to fill those vacancies. It's just, this is something that's going on across the entire state. Um, you know, uh, there's just a shortage of, of licensed staff that, that are ready to, I mean, ready to, to, to come back to, to work this upcoming year or just be in the education field in general. Um, I do know that the unemployment, um, laws change in September. I'm not, I don't know what impact that's gonna have on our ability to fill vacancies, but that is, uh, something we are looking, looking at.
Thank you, sir.
Are there, oh, Ms. Burks.
Status of the track and field at Holyoke High? Any updates? Getting the repairs done on that, on that track at Holyoke High or the the turf that is not looking so hot these days? I'm just really worried we're opening up all the sports again. I wanna make sure our kids are safe if they're running on that track. You know, Mel had advised that any student running with spikes um, could potentially get hurt. The spike could get stuck in one of those cracks. I wanna make sure our kids are safe out on that track. Um, and then also seeing all the spots on the field where um, the green is actually coming up and it's ripping right off of um, the field. So I just didn't know if there was any updates in regards to our track and field.
Yeah, I would have to defer to the mayor on that one. I don't, um, I, no, we're not involved with.
I know there's like litigation going on. I just, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're not, where our kids are gonna be safe out using these facilities.
If I can, I'll just, I, I know, uh, and I'll, and I'll put myself in order, I got a meeting with the solicitor in the next day, so I'll try to check, get a firm answer. But I know they were looking to get potentially some work done prior to a settlement, but that was where it's at. Last I heard, that's about 10 days ago, so I haven't heard any updates on that since, so, uh. And I'm not sure from a legal standpoint, that's where they wanna go, but that's what they're looking at. Oh, and, and I, I think they've had an either the contractor or the subcontractor had an offer, but again, we're looking at it from long-term, both making it fixed for now, but also we want it permanently fixed.
Yeah, I just, you know, like I said, I'm worried about the safety of the kids, you know, listening to Mel, it's really concerning. Um, but also going up and viewing the field and seeing where it's pulling, um, I'm just, I'm just worried about the kids being out there.
Yeah, I, I will, I will get an answer in the next day, so I'll give it to Anthony so he can share.
Thank you. Anthony, one other quick question? Em, I know you, um, said about all the sports, but what about like Mr. Todd, the musicals and the choir? Are they coming back too?
Yeah, I mean, um, we haven't heard any guidance about not being able to offer, you know, like the musical and stuff like that as long, you know, we're gonna consult on, on events like that, we're gonna consult with the Board of Health, so I can't really tell, without knowing the exact event and the details behind it and consulting with the Board of Health, I can't commit and say that, um, yeah, we'll be do, able to do everything, um, because the, you know, the virus is still real, um, the Delta variant is what it is, you know, you guys all have, have, you guys know what's going on, so um, everything we do, especially big events like that, we'll consult with the Board of Health. And if it is an opportunity for our students that, that we can provide safely, we're, we're definitely gonna do it.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Collmore, you look like you were ready to say something.
No, I just want, I just wanted to say, uh, talking about, uh, classes and things like this. I see in an article, Sunday's paper about the state having some money for communities to, uh, start swimming programs to teach kids how to swim and, uh, lifeguarding and things like this. I think it's something we ought to start looking at because, you know, years ago and even today, we still have canal systems. We have the rivers, we have the ponds in our, in our area that we don't want our children be going into these canals and something like this, get injured because they can't swim or they haven't, uh, taken a lifesaving course to, uh, prevent any safety reasons at all. So I just think we ought to just take a look at this. If the state has the money to do this and do it properly, then you know, it's something worth looking at because I know a few years ago, the, the state came in with some, some money and, uh, we had swimming lessons at Holyoke High School about safety issues. So it's something we ought to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore.
We will. Uh, well, I, I do have a meeting set up in the coming weeks. I think right after school starts to meet with all of our partners. So we're gonna be meeting with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, Girls Inc., uh, the YMCA, and the, the premise of the meeting is like, how can we partner um, as a school department and as community organizations to support our students? So I, I plan on investing Esser dollars in creating partnerships like that. Uh, I'm not sure that, uh, about the swimming piece in general, but I'm sure that some of those ideas might come up and we're gonna be looking to partner with, with local organizations to be able to provide services to our kids, um, you know, at, at no cost to them.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Um, I'm gonna make this quick. It's old business, old business for the mayor. Um, that bathroom with the Catholic school, was all that stuff taken care of?
Yeah, that's in the presentation, a little further in the presentation.
We're almost, Rosalie, you always jump at the gun. She's like, we're ready to go.
I'm ahead of the class, that's all.
You're good, you're good.
I've heard, um, you know, I've seen a lot of questions about uniforms, so one of the things I wanted to do was just put a quick chart together that is easy for families to follow. Um, you can see here listed all the schools that have a uniform policy and all the schools that don't. Um, I will say that, you know, we, we, I've talked to the principals, um, you know, through, uh, and, and to Jackie Gossin, um, that it, there's no, there's not gonna be, uh, like punitive enforcement of uniform policies, like, we're gonna work with families. We're not gonna be uh, sending students home because they don't have their uniform on. Um, you know, we, we, we're gonna use that as an opportunity to make connections with our families. Um, if they need uniforms, you know, we'll be able to assist them with that. So I just want the community to know that, you know, here's the list of schools that have them, the schools that don't. And, um, you know, it's not, it's not anything that we're gonna use, you know, we're not gonna be sending kids home because they didn't wear their uniforms.
Another thing that families are posting is, um, uh, materials they might need.
Yeah.
Um, per school, per student, the teachers, so where can they access?
They can, they, uh,
That kind of stuff.
Yeah, they can reach out to their school.
Okay.
Uh, middle, that was it for the return to school. Um, we did have a, a, a middle school update. I wanted Erin Linville to come on camera and walk us through this, this part of the presentation.
Hi, everyone. Great to see you. Thank you for having me. Um, I wanted to give you a brief update on two pieces with the middle school, um, two big pieces with middle schools. Um, on the first slide, um, slide 24, I just wanted to review the, any grade configuration changes that we've had this year. So MetCath has as their, as the dual language program goes, grows a grade per year, they're now up to grade seven, serving grades pre-K to seven. Um, Veritas Prep Holyoke has expanded to grade eight, now serving grades five to eight, so that's their full um, intended grade span. And Dunne Hugh is serving K, um, grades pre-K to five and eighth grade. Since that other class of rising sixth graders now attends Holyoke STEM. So we appreciate all the planning those schools have done to welcome more students. Um, the second piece of this is, I've been working with a group of about 15 to 20 school leaders, teachers, counselors, um, other school staff, families, community members, um, including Erin Brunell is a school committee member on a middle grades collaborative study team. And our charge of this team is to make recommendations on the vision for and characteristics of an excellent middle grades education, consider various implications and possibly emerge with a recommendation on a, a middle grade school configuration. We, um, started meeting at the end of the school year, have done a lot of reading. We're also gonna have, um, some opportunities for input at the start of the school year. Um, some inputs already happened. People volunteered for these empathy interviews. They got to share their perspective. But there was 29 of those interviews conducted, including with six students. Um, they also with the District Parent Advisory Group back in June or so. Um, so that, those are some things that have already happened, but we have more opportunities for input and wanna ask people listening to consider attending these. One is, we're gonna have a survey going out, um, the first week of school, August 26th, um, to solicit input. It'll be about 15 questions. There's also gonna be meetings as an opportunity. Uh, we'll have a staff meeting on September 21st from 3:30 to 4:30. That's one of the PD days, so everyone should be able to be done by that time, and we'll have some family and community meetings as well. The first one is gonna be on Wednesday, September 1st from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. They'll be in-person, socially distanced, masks on, you know, only come if you're healthy, um, at one, at, um, one Holyoaks location at 43 Canal Street. We'll have translation and interpretation available, of course. And then also there will be a virtual meeting on September 21st, um, from 5:30 to 6:30. We'll post information on the website and publicize it through the Holyoke update, um, and social media, so people know how to sign up so that then they can register. Um, the, just to clarify, the staff meeting is gonna be virtually though, if a staff member really, if a staff member really wanted to share their thoughts in person, they could reach out to me. My email address is elinville@hps.holyoke MA.us and we'll also continue to update our website with more, um, information. Uh, the, the work of the middle grades collaborative study team is important as it's, on its own since, you know, we've been moving from pre-K to A to distinct, um, elementary and middle schools and really have to coalesce around one, um, one vision for middle school and then differentiate the schools as needed. And it's, but it's also important because this will feed into our planning for the middle school building, which is the next slide. Um, through the, you know, the hard work of the school committee, the city council and many other people, the Massachusetts School Building Authority has accepted us, um, to their pipeline for a school building project. And that eligibility period kicked off on August, um, 2nd. We already got the first deliverable done, the initial compliance certification. It was due September 1st, but we turned it in. It just shows that we, we, being the Holyoke Public Schools and the mayor's office, um, the city of Holyoke understand what our commitments to this and what it means. And then, um, then the next important, um, stage of this is, um, is identifying a school building committee. Um, Superintendent Soto showed there, and then Mayor Murphy had a press conference, um, last Monday to just share that they're soliciting nominations to serve on the school committee or school building committee, rather, sorry. People are, um, welcome to email or call Mayor Murphy to share um, a little bit more about their background and why they're interested. There's some very set, um, membership in the school building committee such as um, like a local person who has approval to do, um, buildings and someone who, we need to have a principal on it. We need to have someone who is familiar with building maintenance. But then there's also categories. There's other categories and there's categories like someone who's knowledgeable about architecture and construction and engineering, so um, it's a big commitment, um, to serve on it as, like Devon know from their previous experience, um, Devon estimates up 10 hours a month over a few you, year, few year period. Um, and we're really hoping that through being really open about the building committee nomination process that people are considering stepping up in this way. Um, and would love if the school committee would encourage kind of shoulder tapping people who they think might be good and encouraging them to apply. This definitely won't be the only opportunity for input. The school building committee will, will also have, um, sub-working groups around specific topics such as, uh, you know, communications or finance or building design. Well, we'll have other opportunities for people to have input where it's not as big of a time commitment, where people can share their expertise in defined areas. Um, so that is a big deliverable coming up and then, and then we have two online and online questionnaires that are due by November 1st. So, thank you for listening and I would love to open it up to questions if anyone had anything.
So, um, just the, the question of the school building committee, right?
Uh huh, yeah.
I'm gonna direct this to Mayor Murphy. In regards to school committee members, um, that want to have an interest on being, how many school committee members can, can be appointed to the school building committee?
Well, one has to be.
Okay, so one is a given. So one from the school committee.
And, and in terms of how many, obviously, that would depend on other people that apply and all that kind of stuff. I, I, one of the things that I have heard uh, that I'm trying to do is make sure that I have, uh, a, a variety and diversity of opinion. Uh, both because I, I think it's important that, uh, all aspects of the thought process be included. Uh, so I, I certainly would respect anyone that wants to apply. I, I will try to make sure that I get that kind of representation. Uh, and I do wanna make sure that that happens. Uh, I've already had some applications come in and it's only been a couple of days, so, uh, and so far what I, what I've had looks pretty impressive, so I'm hoping, obviously, I'm not saying who that is, but I'm, I'm certainly, uh, um, happy with what the response has been so far and I'm just hoping, you know, there'll be many. And, and the other aspect that we talked about in Aaron and, and, uh, Dr. Soto, I can't call you Dr. Soto, you're still Anthony, but I used to coach him, so I, I get that right. Uh, but, uh, you know, one of the things that I, we talked about and, and as people come in, I'll be talking, you know, can you really make that 10, 12 hour commitment uh, every month? Or, you know, is it something, you, you've got expertise in a certain area that you might be able to really offer that, you know, in a lesser timeframe, uh, so that we get more input and we get more expertise, but not necessarily where they have to commit to that 10 or 12 hours every month. And, and I think, one thing I have said, and Devon, you'll, you, you, you'll heard me, that you're one of the candidates, whoever becomes the mayor, uh, you know, I, I think it is crucial that that person be there. Not sometime, but all the time. Uh, that, that is a leadership that has to happen and I think that can unite the community towards the goals that you want, so. And that's what I'm looking for. And now, again, I'm, I'm taking all the input I get. I'm taking all the applicants. I encourage everyone that's interested in being on that to send me your, your letter. I will sit down and meet with each one of them, uh, and then try to make a, a good judgment in terms of how to balance that committee.
So then, uh, for clarification purpose, um, any school committee member that has interest, they send an email to me and you both, just so I know which one is being appointed?
That would be fun.
Okay, so if there's any school committee member that wants to be a part of the school building committee, please email me your interest, um, myself and Mayor Murphy together, um, so that way we know kind of who has an interest and then if we, if someone else is picked, then at least you can also submit as a, a community member, um, with, with your expertise in the area.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
Just real quick, does that also apply to the city council on one member? And then, just curious.
They're not required to have one.
Okay.
Uh, I certainly would have interest in their applications, uh, since obviously the key, eventually, one of the key points is a mayor that's gonna submit a bond application and a city council that's gonna vote for it, so. Uh, I do think, uh, it's important that, uh, whether it's directly or indirectly, that they have some involvement in that, so. But it is not a, I, I thought, until the other day, I thought it was mandated, but it's not mandated.
Are there any que, other further questions on the middle school update? You know, I know we do have a backtrack to people that have, um, questions, um, going back to the school update, reopening update. Um, Ms. Tensley-Williams?
This question is directed to you, uh, Mrs. Soto, I almost said Dr. Soto, but, um, do you have a budget where parents who cannot afford uniforms for their children? Is there a budget or do we have to pick up donations? I'm willing to give to that end as far as donations if we don't have a budget. And I just need to know which parents can afford it.
We work with families individually. Uh, we do have a grant, um,
We work with families individually. Uh, we do have a grant, um, that, 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 that could be used towards something like that. Our, our, uh, family engagement team is, is really focused on making those types of connections with families and then connecting them with the right resources to make sure that they get what they need.
Some parents have more than one child, so that's kind of difficult.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. You guys have a grant. Um, Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, so just a question going through these uniform, um, guidelines. And, and you know, and everyone knows here that I am fully against uniforms. Uh, um, state law doesn't allow us to have uniforms, yet we still go about doing it if we were challenged, we would lose. Um, but looking at the Veritas Prep, um, uniforms, I, and the sheet, I think it's ridiculous that students are required to buy a certain printed uniform pop. And that we couldn't even find a screen printer in the city of Holy Oak to do the work and that we are using a vendor out of Chicopee, um, as that vendor. I, I think that's ridiculous. Uh, also back to what we were talking about with attendance, that their whole mission on here is strive for less than five uh, and to achieving ninety-four percent attendance. And when you go to the website to purchase a uniform, it's not even uh, able to be translated. So I, I mean, th- there's a lot of problems with this and I, I don't really care that they're a third party running one of our schools, but it's, it's not appropriate. I mean, can we not, is there not a screen printer in the city of Holy Oak that could make uniform shirts? If we were going to require something like this? I mean, you can get, they mentioned that you can get uniform bottoms anywhere. I mean, they list a few stores just like the other schools do, but if you can find khaki pants at the store down the street or from a friend, you can take them. But the fact that you need to purchase a, a uniform shirt, um, just seems a little, um, wrong and that we couldn't even find these uniform shirts to be actually made in Holy Oak seems equally as bad. Um, but there's a lot going on in this sheet that I just don't necessarily like. And maybe there is a link that's also, uh, a website that is in Spanish, but I just followed the link that's here and because this sheet that we got, I mean, I know these are going out in both English and Spanish, so maybe there is a different link that we just don't have, but I just know the one that I went to here is not.
Thank you.
Have we checked with Papers, Paper City Printing?
Yeah.
I mean, I actually didn't think that public schools could direct people with these types of purchases to a certain vendor because it would, it overstepped some of the mass procurement laws, but that's something to check with for Lori Belanger, that I didn't think you could say buy from here unless it actually went out, um, to a process. Um, but that's more of a question for Lori. I mean, it's, it's, it's vague in some of those, but I thought there had to be some sort of process. Even for sports uniforms, I think we have to at least go through at least a competitive quoting process on that, um, and direct people if they had to buy anything for that. But I don't think that, I, I don't know. I just, I don't like a lot going on on this and it just is not very centered on families, centered on Holy Oak.
Ms. Tensley Williams? Normally, I would not be in favor of uniforms, but it helps. A lot of kids are trying to GQ and all this. That would put a stop to some of the kids because they call them skips if they can't buy the right sneakers. So, I think it would put a stop to, I'm looking cool and look at my jacket and all this stuff. My mother had ten of us kids and, of course, we didn't have uniforms, but that would help. This way here, they'll all look the same way. And I think that might be easier, even on the parents, because trying to buy different clothes all the time, that's tough.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley Williams. Mr. Collomar?
Who has in charge of, uh, the printing on these shirts? We don't want one school with one different printing and another school with another different printing and, uh, what it says on the, on these shirts.
No, Veritas is, um, let's see how I can put it. Charter?
It's, it's an organization that instead of going out and hiring a principal to, um, to run the school, we hired, uh, uh, Veritas, who, who, who runs a charter school in Springfield, but is completely independent of what they're doing in Holy Oak. So we, we hire them to operate the building. So they, they, they set their curriculum. They, um, you know, they, a- and then we give, they have a lot more autonomy around how they use resources than, um, than, than a traditional school would.
I'm, I'm just concerned about wording on some of these shirts. If someone comes up and puts a different kind of wording on these shirts,
No, no.
It just says the name of the school.
It says, it'll say Veritas Prep, but none of our other schools? Yeah, um, it's somewhere in here. Um, oh, yeah. It's this thing right here, their symbol, like a patch. It's as if they were to buy a patch, but it's not going to be a patch. It's already going to be like screen printed onto the shirt, like a logo shirt. Um, but none of our other schools that have uniforms have any patch or anything. It's just buy a shirt. And, uh, specific color shirts, specific color pants. But Veritas, it's like, you know, they have that for all their schools where the students are, you know, highlighting where they come from.
Veritas has no problem taking money from the city of Holy Oak, but they can't choose a vendor to actually give some of that money back into is what's crazy.
So, Mr. Soto, that's a job for you.
No, I appreciate the comment. Um, I do know that, uh, I was-
Dean probably could have made them.
I was over at, um,
Yeah.
I was over at Veritas the other day. I, I addressed, I spoke to their staff. They were doing professional development. And I do know that, uh, they are, they have a lot of these uniforms already at the school for families to come, um, pick up. Um, so it's not just go over there and get them printed. I'm sure that, Devin, that is where they printed them. But I, I did see a bunch of boxes with uniforms and they were in the process of, um, having families come pick them up.
But I think they do charge them. Um, they, it's like a bill that they have to pay. So eventually, the family is paying whatever they paid for it, but they're doing it like installments, something like Finger Hut. You'll get it now and you pay little by little. I'm sorry. Is that inappropriate? Ms. Feliciano?
No, no, no. Um, how much are the shirts? Because usually when you buy printed shirts, they're like pretty pricey. I can go to Old Navy right now or Walmart and get the shirts for like six dollars. And then I, I, I mean, I know because when my children went to the charter, I paid thirty dollars a shirt. Um, so I just want to know, is it cost effective for families and do you know what the, what the prices are?
I don't have the answer to that, but I can certainly follow up with, uh, Veritas and get that information back to the committee.
Yeah, I just want to know. I mean, again-
And I'll also ask, um, what, you know, the, the, the students that are going to Veritas are from the flats in South Holy Oak neighborhood. So, um, I will ask, you know, what, what they do in the scenario that a family can't afford.
Right, and you're back, if it's the flats in Holy Oak, you're right back at like socially economic disadvantaged individuals, right? And so like twenty-five dollar polo makes a big difference when you go to Walmart for six dollars.
Yeah.
You know, and so, I mean, I understand. Yeah, I know, and I get it because I did it too. Like, I was very fortunate that, like, they had a payment plan, but again, on a fixed income, it's just difficult. And I just want to know, are you not going to jack it up really high for somebody?
Mm-hmm. You just said flats in, in, in South Holy Oak, so that school's not even open to all students throughout the district?
It can. It, it, I mean, it is, there's, there's definitely a bunch of choice slots.
Okay, so that's like an application?
Yeah, they, I mean, there's, we-
But it's not-
There's definitely space and there's opportunity for any family that is, um, that is not in those neighborhoods to access that programming if they so choose.
But it's not an option for our kids in the flats and, and, and South Holy Oak?
That's their neighborhood school.
That's their neighbor, okay.
That's their zone school.
Hmm, all right. We're going to move along. Oh, no, I have Mr. Krishan.
I just, I remember when we toured Dean, they did, they did have a shirt printing, but I also heard that they were discontinuing the program. But I think the machinery is still there. And just once again, when I hear about needs we have in our own school district that we have the ability to provide, we just don't seem to do it. And, uh, and then, you know, also when I hear about, you know, again, with lack of interpreters for one thing or another, and I think about our, our program, our Spanish immersion program that I know we're going to touch upon again tonight, but it's just like, we have the things here and I just hope that we, you know, try to use what we have as much as possible. That's all I was going to say. Devin sparked, I was just like, I remember seeing that machine that he's mentioning, but.
Yeah, Mr. Collomar, I'm actually a graduate of Dean and that was my shop. One of my favorite teachers, Mr. Richardson, he's probably one of the funniest teachers I've ever had in my entire life. Um, haven't seen him since high school, but that was the shop to be in when I was there. Um, my dad, uh, was in printing, my brother was in printing. My dad worked for Market Printing, Manser Holden, and most recently Hadley Printing down in the flats over by Amadeo's. So, um, I tried following in their footsteps and, uh, that was my shop of choice. I used to print many shirts, many business cards. But that, you know, unfortunately, when I, when I did come to Holy Oak to work here, that wasn't a shop that was offered. You know, enrollment at Dean was a hundred and eighty-five students at the time and they're just, you know, there, there wasn't enough students to have the amount of shops that we had, um, when I was in school.
If I may for middle grades programming, I, I did just want to let people know that, um, across the district, um, people in middle grades can apply to, um, attend Holy Oak STEM or Veritas Prep Holy Oak. They're primarily neighborhood schools, but kids could also apply to have some choice. And if you had any questions on that, they can call the enrollment center. Um, people can also apply for the dual language program now that it's in middle grades. At, in the middle grades level, um, the children would need to be Spanish dominant. And so often, when we get newcomers to our Spanish dominant, we'll even direct them towards dual language program at the middle grade levels. If anyone had questions about that, I'm happy to also come back or talk to you on the phone.
Sounds great. Thank you so much, Ms. Linville. Okay, I, was that it between the middle school and, um, the return to school? So we're moving on to the Dean property transfer?
Thank you, Erin. Um, for the Dean property transfer, I'm just going to turn it over, uh, to the mayor.
Thank you, Anthony. Uh, so, the concept here is, actually, I introduced it as a counselor, uh, along with Counselor Bartley, uh, for a few reasons. Uh, and I did meet with, uh, the city engineer, I met with the principal, uh, and I think you were there, Anthony, right?
Yes.
So, we, we met to make sure that the idea of the transfer would have no negative impacts on the school. Everybody was pretty much in agreement with that. I do think there's a, a number of positive potentials. Uh, we're, we're looking at is from the, uh, west side of the parking lot at St. Vincent Street going up to Route Five, uh, on the east side of St. Vincent Street. There is approximately, and I, I don't have the exact layout, I know there, it's in here, uh, a parcel that we would take. So, two things would happen. Number one, the sidewalk, which is very difficult right now to maintain and during the winter when there's snow, uh, people are walking in the road because the sidewalk's not clear. So, uh, the city engineer did a couple, and a couple of other things. There are trees that are falling in that area, both on St. Vincent Street and on Route Five, which make, again, making it very difficult to walk, uh, up that area. So what we looked at and the city engineer looked at, the possibility of the school department transferring the land to the city and the city's soliciting proposals to see what could be done within those properties. The city engineer believes potentially, uh, there could be a smaller home, uh, closer to, uh, the parking lot on St. Vincent Street, another home at the top, uh, on St. Vincent Street, plus one home, uh, on Route Five, uh, going towards the McDonald's. Uh, doing that would do three, well, three things to me. Number one, it would provide homeowner is going to be maintaining their sidewalk and removing the snow. There's going to be an obligation, they have to do that. Number two, we'd be taking falling trees, uh, that are making it inconvenient, if not dangerous, for, for a kid to walk up the street. Number three, it would make it easier for cars coming up St. Vincent Street to see, uh, both sides as they get to the top. Especially cars coming from the, uh, from the north and going south, uh, so that they would be able to have a better vision. I, I know there are some people that are not necessarily keen on the idea, but the potential is, uh, we end up with obviously some tax revenue, we end up with cleaner sidewalk, we end up with a safer roadway, uh, and we end up with, uh, students, in, in my opinion, being in a more comfortable situation coming to and from school when they're walking, uh, without any negative impact on the school. So, all of this would be, if you turned it over, the city would solicit a proposals. We don't necessarily agree that we're going to do a proposal because we would have to see what the proposals are and how valid they are and how they fit into that plan. But if that were, they came in and they were fitting into that plan, that would be our goal.
I know I've got hands raised. Wow, this is the first time I got a lot of people's hands raised. Ms. Burks?
So, my concern, and rightfully so, is that I don't want, you know, the, the property gets turned over, like when we turned over Lynch and it sat there and now it's trouble and we have, you know, another junk store moving into the neighborhood. Do you know what I mean? Like, if this was, you guys have a solid plan, like you're going to take this property, turn it into housing, or if there was a solid plan where we know that there's not going to be like a Dollar General or a Dollar Store or, you know, another McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts going there, then, then it would be awesome, um, to do. If we're bringing revenue into the city and we're, or we're bringing housing into the city and it's safer for our kids. My fear with us doing this is that we're going to have the same kind of thing as Lynch and we're getting more not quality businesses in the city. I mean, we need, I mean, look at the Plaza. It's, so, that's my concern. And then my next concern is what about the rest of that land going up that strip? You know, what, what's the plan there? So, you take that first block and you put, let's say, two houses in or a duplex, what's going on with the rest of that property? Um, because that's a big strip and is this going to be like a repetitive thing where it's, you know, let's keep going?
According to, according to the city engineer, who I trust, where he's, uh, he does a great job. And I, he, he does not think the rest of that area would be developable. So, he, as he did it, this is, first, we looked at just getting right up and going to Route Five and that was it. But he did say that there, we could go approximately another a hundred feet, uh, north, uh, and be able to do it. But after that, no, he did not think the rest of that was developable.
And is there going to be fencing there to protect our students from whatever goes in there? Like, there's still a fence still up there, right?
There, there are fences in there, but the fence, I can tell you right now, the fence, because of the falling trees that are there, uh, there, there's a lot of times that fence is leaning over, so they're, they're walking away from the fence to, to not be hitting the fence.
Yeah.
Uh, if, if we're in good shape now, I would not have introduced it. If that was being maintained and I did not see students and others walking in the road, especially in the winter. But even, even when we are now with good weather, because of so many trees that have just become deteriorated over the years and fallen on the fence, both at St. Vincent and on Route Five, uh, I said, you know, we, there's got to be something better we can do. Uh, and that's where I asked the city engineer to take a look at it. His view is that, that is what would happen. And we, obviously, I won't be in office when that happens, but if it were up to me, my goal would be, you get, you seek proposals. These are the proposals we're looking for and these are the proposals that would be locked in to the sale. Uh, and, and the only thing is that makes sense, it is residential. That's another point, residential, and I believe if I'm not mistaken, it's R1 or R2. Uh, so, uh, you know, it would be for housing, uh, as the primary and for me, the only option. And if it didn't work out, uh, we would be nowhere else.
What would the city do with it? If we turn it over?
Yep.
And the city decides, you know, they can't figure it out over ten years like Lynch, like what happens to the property then? It's just going to sit there?
It would be in the same situation as right now.
And then who's going to take care of that property?
Well, right now, nobody's taking care of it now either. Well, right now, nobody's taking care of it now either. That, that's my, one of my points, so, I, I don't know.
I got a couple people I have.
Yeah.
So it'll be Mr. Sheen, Mr. Koshain, Mr. Wallahan, Mr. Collmore.
So, just because this committee has not dealt with property transfers in a very long time, and I think Mr. Collmore and I were the only ones on the committee, and maybe Mr. Wallahan, that have dealt with property transfers. What the committee gets to determine is if the Hoyoke School Committee and the school department has a use for that property. If we don't have a use for that property, and the city is asking for that property, we get to make that determination if we don't see a future use for that property. So, we don't get to determine what gets built there, or what gets put there. The city, through the mayor or the councils, making a request that we give back this piece of property. We get to determine if there's educational viability, and to the needs and wants of the Hoyoke Public Schools. We don't get to determine the X, Ys, and Zs of everything else. It's, and, and our obligation is, if there's, if we give it back to the city and the city does nothing, it's the city plowing the, the sidewalk and doing all that type of work because they're the owners. But we get to determine, do we still need it for the purposes of the educational experience of the Hoyoke Public Schools? And, and that is our, that is our vote if we give back a piece of property that we, we don't need. Then the city turns around, there was a parcel property we dealt with up on Whiting Farms Road, right near, um, Dunhu school, a long, 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 long time ago. We said we don't need this anymore. The mayor at the time made the determination to sell that and go through that process. We don't sell any property. We give back to the city, and they make that determination of what's gonna get done. The city is saying we would like this piece of property.
No, I'm saying crystal ball wise. How do you know and figure out whether or not it's property that's viable for the schools in the future? Like, just take your best guess.
We get the information from the experts involved, and we make that determination with, and that's with every decision you as an elected official make. You don't have a crystal ball for any decision that you make, and you, you study it, and you make the best possible choice.
Mr. Koshain?
I know that, um, I, I'm a real estate lawyer by trade, but I've dealt with a lot of, um, people buying from various cities. Especially the city of Springfield was very, um, aggressive in, in how they would sell, uh, property. And one of the tools that they have at their disposal is a right of reverter, where they'll put right into the deed, if you don't follow the plan within so much time, it comes back to us, and we'll resell it to somebody who's going to do this properly. And it's baked right into it, and they hold the deed for a year often. And then if you don't follow through, and you have, you know, if there's not really any appeal, you know, if you don't have a good reason, they'll just record the deed and the city owns it again. So it's, and, and the other thing I think we could definitely do is, we could definitely come up with a buffer, you know, area, because of that proximity to that parking lot. I was looking at this, and I was just like, wow, this is fascinating. We could have a buffer area for sure, that we think we'd have a, a, a use for, even just for the protection well-being of, you know, that parking lot and the sidewalk that's right there. Um, and then the other idea that occurs to me is, I, I remember way back when Dean, they used to build a home inside of Dean, didn't they? I mean, they used to actually do some serious construction. Isn't this an opportunity for our own students, perhaps, to, to, to build a home in conjunction with, you know, you know, a, a proposal like that could be a very good thing for our, our students at Dean, to give them some real, right there, experience, you know, building three homes possibly. Um, and then putting that into our first-time homebuyer, uh, program, and, and the Buy Hoyoke program that we've had for a long time. It's a really great opportunity, so, just things to think about.
Mr. Wallahan?
Thank you. Um, so like, um, told me the zoning on the, on the property is residential. How big is the lot?
Uh, there, there would be three, potentially three lots, uh, and the ones at the top are the larger, uh, and I know I should've brought that, but I don't have that, uh, Mr. Wallahan. Uh, basically, uh, the, the one closest to the parking lot would be the smallest lot, and the ones closer to, uh, North Hampton Street would be the, both on St. Vincent. That would be the largest one, on St. Vincent and North Hampton would be the largest. Uh, the one going north on Route Five would be the second largest. The smallest would be the one, uh, only on St. Vincent and closer to the parking lot. I, I don't have the actual dimensions, but I know the city engineer believes two for sure, but he thought the third one up, uh, on there would have no, and all of those would have no jeopardy, uh, to any of the property from the Dean School, including the parking lot, and it would be buffered, uh, in terms of what they could do. And, and just if I can make one, to Mr., uh, to cool comedic Koshain, comment, uh, you know, we always do reverter clauses. So, when we're doing something, if you agree to do this, you get a certain period before we take it back because you haven't lived up to what your obligation is. And, and I know the city engineer, I know he expects to be around for a few more years. Uh, and I know his, his view was that it, it is really just for, uh, homes. He, he could not see someone trying to build a business there, so, just so you know that. And it would require his own change to do it, or a special permit. And I don't think the city council would go along with that.
Yeah, well, the, um, geography is kinda steep going up, so that's why I was wondering how many lots, how many lots could be built? Um, now, who is, who's gonna be taking the ownership of this? Is the city of Hoyoke, or HEDIC, or HRA, there's, there's different?
Well, if you transfer, if you transfer, it would go to the city to start with.
Start with.
Uh, and then, and then I, I think at that point, whether or not we send it to HRA, or to HEDIC, but my gut is, the city would look to solicit proposals at that point. Uh, and with the idea of, you know, we're looking to see if you can bid to build homes. And then how many homes, and, and, and then, uh, what your criteria for, we would take a bid and go from there. But, obviously, to do it, if somebody is going to do it, there would be a lot of clearing because a lot of those trees are in, in terrible shape, uh, and they all have to, they would all have to be cleared. It, it is not an easy area to develop. But if you look across the street, clearly, there's a house on the southerly side of St. Vincent at Route Five. There's a house on the, on the southerly side, uh, at Arthur Street. Uh, they would somewhat be complimentary to what we're talking about on the other side. The only one that would not be complimentary would be the one, uh, going towards, uh, going north on Route Five.
And how come, um, we just can't hire, like, a, uh, a forester to clean it up? You know, I mean, we're selling the lot just to clean it up? Sounds a little, a little odd to me.
Well, no, we, we, could we hire a forester to clean it up? We, with, with all due respect, we haven't been able to hire, uh, get enough trees in the cities to be removed where we've got them falling in, in areas. We're having a problem doing that, John. Uh, so, and, and I, this is not just to clean that up. It is legitimately, in my opinion, and I live right down there, and I drive up St. Vincent Street frequently. Uh, this is no, in, in my mind, it is a safety issue on that street. Uh, I have, uh, spoken about trying to get better street lining in there to try to keep people on the right side of the, of the highway as they're going up and down. Uh, but with, with the trees that are falling, with the fence that has fallen, and with the lack of maintenance, and right now, uh, to a great extent, uh, when there's snows, that does not get cleared until the snow melts. Uh, and, and that's just not, that's just not a good situation. And it, it's not doing, in my opinion, it is not providing the Dean students, or the, or the school system, or Dean, any benefits to have that property. It, it is a potential, uh, improvement of the site, both in terms of, uh, a more effective use, and also in terms of safety, in my opinion.
My other issue is that, that's, it's really the last opportunity that we would have to expand the parking lot. You know, if we're ever to expand the Dean School or the programs, and we need more, more parking, that seems to kinda, kinda fill up really, really quick sometimes, so, that's my, my last concern.
I, 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 I respect that, I'm not quite sure that the cost of doing a parking lot up there, uh, wouldn't be legitimate either. But that, that is certainly something that is, uh, possible. But based on all the comments I've received from the people, they don't think that is gonna be a problem. You never know.
Mr. Collmore?
Yes. Uh, talking about a buffer zone, when you get up to the top of St. Vincent Street, can we designate, well, we can't designate, we just say, this is what we're giving back to the city. And we, we can still keep that corner lot there, we'll say fifty feet off, off of St. Vincent Street, up North Hampton Street, fifty, just so there's proper clearance when you get up to the top of the street, for visibility of cars coming up and down, uh, Route Five.
Yeah. Whatever, whatever is allowed to be built there does have to have frontage that le, creates space, creates vision. It's not gonna be right on the street, i- either way, in St. Vincent or on Route Five. There's gonna have to be a, a, a frontage area that is there that creates a clearance. And, uh, go, going to the top and having that, uh, fence cleared and, and the trees cleared, uh, you would, with a house there, you would have far better vision of what's coming than you currently have.
You, you say that, that.
I am saying it.
But, once, once we turn that property over to a person to build a home there, they can put up a, a twelve-foot fence right, right on their property without consulting us.
I don't believe they can do that without, again, getting a special permit. And I don't think that would happen. I don't think that would be allowed.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Also to add to St. Vincent, uh, street, that's a steep hill. The street before it, it's horrible. You can't even, when you get up to the top, you can't even know or see what's coming. It is very dangerous, and, um, someone need to address that. I don't know who's supposed to cut it. Uh, don't make me go and cut it, 'cause I will. You can't see when you get to the top. That's very dangerous.
Ms. Feliciano Sims?
So I just wanna address that, you know, the safety, you're bringing all these safety concerns. The lot's not gonna be paid, you know, bought tomorrow, or we're not gonna do anything. Again, I'm all for revenue into the city, help me lower my damn taxes, right? Um, but you're talking about visibility, safety, no shoveling, the lighting, the trees, the broken down things, um, students walking on the roads, so now, who's going to be accountable? This lot's not gonna sell tomorrow, it's not gonna do anything, and school's starting back. So, cold weather's coming, and all this other stuff, is there gonna be, now that we addressed all these concerns, are we gonna do something about that? Are we gonna have that discussion about that? Because that's now an issue. You just opened up a, the whole safety issue, and I'm just a little concerned if our students are walking on that road. And especially on that road, anybody ever fall on that road in ice?
I can say that.
I mean, I crashed my Jeep on that road. I slid right down, and it was just like, it was awful. So, I just, you know, with these safety concerns you're bringing up, a little concerned now that our students are going up and down.
Students, students that, um, live on that side of North Hampton Street get bused. So, if a student is walking that way, that is a student that is likely going to a friend's house or something like that.
Still walking.
Uh, it's not, like, but, but we're not asking kids that live there and wa, to walk that, 'cause that's declared a, a hazard zone. So if a student lived there, uh, lived in that area, like Tokoniki, for example, Tokoniki's within the eyelid range, but we bus kids to Tokoniki because we deem that a, a hazardous walk zone, and we don't want kids walking there. But, I agree, some kids will, you know, I've seen it, they, you know, they'll, they'll, you know, they'll leave basketball practice, and they wanna go to their friend's house at Tokoniki or something like that, and they'll.
Right, I, I mean, I get it, at least throw down salt. I mean, if that's the case, like, again, if we can't maintain it, 'cause, you know, we all, as kids, you know, we all seen it, right? Even in PEC, how many of us have crossed over on that area, knowing that, you know, it was unsafe or anything else? But again, if this is an issue, and kids still choose to walk that, like, again, throwing salt, throwing dirt, just to make it somewhat accessible to our students, is just something that I, you know, thought of.
I'm just gonna go, uh, off of what everybody's really saying. Um, first off, it reminds me of when they wanted to put the marijuana company in the flats, and I don't recall having a meeting, and I was like, and I showed up at the city council saying, well, where's the Ward One residence? 'Cause, mind you, it's right behind Kelly School. And so we finally had a meeting. Was this something that was addressed with the residents in that area? To say that, um, you'll be able to see better when you get to the top? Doesn't matter, 'cause even when you go on the street next over, that you go to the top, you still can't see, and those are houses. Um, and some even park on the street, in the breakdown lanes. To say that they're gonna be enforced to shovel, do we really enforce that right now throughout our community, um, for the other schools? No, they, they'll shovel it when they wanna shovel it. If they're gonna shovel in the morning, it'll be shoveled in the morning. If they're gonna do it in the evening, it's gonna be done in the evening. So to try to sell it in that manner, it's not, it doesn't even make sense because it doesn't even have, it's not, we don't really hold much accountability within the city. We don't hold our departments to do, to do what needs to be done. Um, so, unless that's, that's the, the route that you're gonna take, is really holding accountability to everybody to take their part, to maintain things safe, then that's something else. But even throughout this whole city, not everything is, is done in that manner. You're not gonna have, look at our kids in South Hoyoke. Where the, they walk, the ones that have to walk to Dean, straight on Main Street, right? They're not gonna shovel outside, so either they're gonna walk on the breakdown lane, or they're gonna walk over the snow, or they're gonna find a way to get to the school. What are we doing about that? So, I mean, there's a lot of things here. I do like the idea that Jay brought up, even expanding parking space. Um, and how do you really know that even families will wanna buy in the backyard of a, of a high school?
We don't, and that's exactly the point I made, but I will, let me, let me start off by, uh, saying this. Right now, that, that sidewalk, it should be maintained by the school department, and that's not happening. So let me start there. Uh, it is, right now, that's school property, so, uh, and right now, it, it is not being used. It's property that is not being used, that is, is, uh, creating, uh, and I'll call it a, a safety hazard, and I'll call it a safety hazard. There's trees that are falling, that fence has been pushed over, in many locations, anybody that goes there, you'll see it. Uh, all I'm looking at, and you can say, no, that's fine, but to me, we have an opportunity to look to see if we can make improvements there. And if we can, uh, that would be great. If, if, if you don't think, if you think that, if you legitimately think that that is going to be part of a functional Dean campus in the future, uh, I, I would strongly ask you to go talk to the city engineer and see what the possibility of that is. Uh, I, I just don't see it, and I, and I don't think, uh, what's the Dean been there, thirty-five years? Uh, I, it's just not something that's going to happen. It may not work, and, but at that point, then the city's responsible. And hopefully, uh, you know, they'll do something. Uh, as far as the other things, I mean, I will tell you, I have tried, and I have filed a bill, and we have, we're raising, uh, putting raised sidewalks near Dean, so that kids crossing the street will be able to have a safer aspect to walking across the street from the gym and otherwise. Uh, so there are things, I mean, I, are we doing everything perfect? No, we're not. But I would just encourage you to look at this issue with this piece of property, and make a determination whether this makes sense. If you wanna go and talk about other things, I'll gladly talk about things. But the issue today is this property. Does the school department need it? If you do, then keep it. If you don't think you do, then you got a chance to potentially, uh, have some functioning, uh, properties there that can potentially, uh, improve the safety for your students.
And when do you need the answer?
As soon as you can give one.
So, could it be something, I don't know, that could be tabled and then discussed at next meeting? And this way, maybe have a discussion, or?
Yeah, absolutely. You, you, no, you can, you, I'm not, you, you, it's your decision, and we, we will not, I mean, you have to make that decision whether you think this is, number one, viable for Dean School, without de, 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 having a detrimental effect to Dean School. And if you would agree that potentially, uh, it can make that property. And if you would agree that potentially, it can make that property more functional, both for your students and for some people who might want to have a home. But yeah, you can table it.
Mr. Shan?
I'm going to make a motion to transfer the requested piece of property as outlined by the city from the school department to the city of Hoyoke.
So, there's a motion to, to transfer, I have it from Mr. Shan, seconded by Ms. Tensley-Williams, all those in favor? Oh, wait, is there any discussion? Mr. Colomar?
I think before a motion like this comes before the floor, I think it should, it is, it'd either be the whole committee or a subcommittee come back to the full board for a recommendation on, on what to do with it. We can't be rushing into something so serious about these things without a real discussion. Here we are discussing this for fifteen or twenty minutes. I think it takes a real lot of discussion before any vote like this is going to take place.
Are we saying, like, something like the joint city council school committee?
No.
No.
Just, just the school committee. It only pertains to our Devon's motion
Okay.
to transfer it back to the city. If we, if we don't need it, fine, we transfer it back to the city. But at least have a better discussion about it, whether there's other ways we can use that property or we can't use the property. But in the best interest of the city, let's have a better discussion of it, rather than just fifteen or twenty minutes.
Okay. Mr. Krishan?
I, I think, I think it's a great idea to make the best use of, of land that's not being used. We have way too much property in the city of Hoyoke that's either ex-doubt, owned by the city, not being used. And I think moving forward is important, but this, as Colomar's saying, isn't inaccurate. We haven't even seen a plan, okay? We don't even have any dimensions, and I don't think it would be prudent for us to just say one hundred percent, "Yeah, whatever you want to do," and we have no idea yet, okay? But I think that, I think it does make a lot of sense for us to see the plans and to have maybe a, a small group meet with the city engineer, as you had mentioned.
Yep.
And, and quickly get on with this, because I think one of the mistakes we often make is, don't, we don't move forward when we have the momentum, and then we miss out on opportunities. So, I think we absolutely should, but I think we at least deserve to see a plan and, and have some input perhaps on, you know, I'm sure if, if there was a possibility, as Mr. Wellin had said, of increasing parking, at least, you know, when I look at the picture, you know, maybe a little further up toward the school, maybe that's a little bit easier, just to know what our options are after we speak with the engineer.
Okay, so, I know that there was a motion put on the floor to take a vote to transfer the property, and then I had it second, so it's going to be determining on the vote. So, you know, either you're for it, that we go ahead and transfer, or you're against it, and so then...
I mean, if, if the will of the committee is to table it, I mean, you need to table a motion, you can't table nothing. So, I mean, if you voted up or down, if you voted down, it's over. If you...
So, can I make a motion to table?
If you want to table it, you table the motion, and then you, as vice chair, have to figure out what you're going to do with the tabled motion.
Okay, so...
So, can I make a motion to table it?
A motion to table, I'd need a second. And then, Mr. Krishan, so, is there any discussion on tabling?
No, discussion's not allowed.
It's not allowed for the, for the tabling?
Nope.
No discussion.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, are we doing roll call, or being that we're right here, we can just... We'll do voice vote. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was one, two. Okay. I heard very little voices, so that's why I...
It's your determination.
Okay. So, all those opposed? Okay. And then, anyone abstaining? Rosalie's confused. That's what she told me. I, I'm going to say motion passed to table at this point. So, we're going to table, and we can go, can someone put in a motion to create?
Figure that out.
After the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I'll figure it out after the meeting, see where everybody's going with this one. Okay, so, that motion is a table. I'll do the figuring out after. The next one was the summer projects update. Mr. Soto, I just didn't want the public speakers that came in regards to the ethnic studies. I know that that wasn't a specific agenda item, but they basically brought it under the return-to-school update and just looking at curriculum and, and staffing. Which one, we have no control of staffing, that has, that has nothing to do with us. But what are your plans with the ethnic studies department?
Yeah, I mean, the, the plans haven't changed, other than we've, we've received a ton of feedback, and we're going to make sure that every, all the concerns that had been brought up is addressed. The last time we met, there was a full teaching load, and there was a request to reduce the teaching load, and we did do that, so we freed up one period out of the day. Instead of teaching five classes, we moved it down to four, so that, that allows a little more time for that person. And then, it's going to be, as I mentioned the last meeting, it's going to be a team approach. It's not going to be one, one person's responsibility to do all of those duties and concerns. That means our academics team is going to have to step up when it comes to, you know, collaborating with dual enrollment. That means the counselor that does that at the high school already is going to also do it for the ethnic studies. I'll also say that our, you know, equity work in the district has kind of bounced around from person to person. We had Jose Bo leading it one ti, at, at one point, we've had Mark, who's no longer with us, we've had Mario, Mario, the chief of ACL, leading it at one point, and was no longer with us. And then, Dr. Curtis did some of that, and she's no longer with us. So, I am certainly, I'm, I'm going to be soliciting a contract with an outside vendor to come into our district and help us do an equity audit to let us know what we've done in terms of equity, where we're, you know, you know, highlight some of the great things that have happened over the last few years, where we're at, and then where we should be headed, and make recommendations to me on, like, where that level of work should happen. I'm super interested in, in supporting the ethnic studies program. I said it when we brought it back in June, that, like, one of the thing, one of the, one of the things that, every decision I make, I lead with, "How is this going to impact students?" And with this decision, we're increasing access to that program. The more students are going to access it. And, you know, not always going to make the right decision. This is the, the decision that I feel is the right decision now. I haven't heard from that board, that, the...
The cab?
Yeah, the cab. I haven't been invited to a meeting. I'm ready to engage in conversations with them, I'm ready to have regular meetings with them. You know, I'm ready to, they're members of my team. So, we, we, we do recognize some of the challenges that were brought up, and we're going to do everything we can to address them. And it's going to be a team approach, it's not going to fall on one person.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, it's the summer projects update?
So, I, I wanted to briefly just update the, the committee. When we met in June, we, we shared a list of potential school projects that we were going to be working on. And really just wanted to highlight a few of them. Our facilities team has been doing amazing work. The first one I want to highlight is the Morgan pre-K rubber surface playscape. So, I would say every single time that I had reached out to Morgan, every time I've visited Morgan School, I've heard from a few teachers that they wanted to, they reimagine and re-envision the space that we're looking at now. If Mike Heinz can get it up, let me just pause for a second, give him an opportunity to get it up. But it was an area in the back courtyard of Morgan that was just, it had a bunch of uneven surfaces, it had cracks in the cement. It was a space that really the, the schools wanted to use, and, and they, they just couldn't use it because of how it wasn't safe for, like, the, the earlier kids, pre-K, to use. So, what we've done is we've engaged in a, in a project this past summer, and we resurfaced it with rubber, it's beautiful, the staff are going to be so happy when they see it tomorrow. The students are going to get a lot of use out of it, and I'm really proud of that project that we did down at Morgan School in the courtyard. The second project is the, you know, thankfully, the, we've heard from a lot of the students at Metcalf Middle School, they talked about bathrooms, we, and handicap accessibility, and, and we, everything that the students asked for, we were able to address. And, and again, I'm proud of our facilities team, and I'm proud of the students for bringing this up. I love how, how passionate they were in advocating for what they thought was important and what they wanted to see in their school. And this is an example that, that we listened, you know, the students spoke up and we listened. Another big, the other project I wanted to highlight is we've had a science labs in, at, in the PEC building for a while, and as you know, we, we've co-located that space. So, Veritas just added another grade, and every year, we're using more and more of the space. And this, for, for a while, we've had these science labs that had been just dead space, not used because of the low enrollment, and that's slower enrollment in that school compared to what it was built for. And our team did a great job tearing up, there was, you know, it was an asbestos project, we had to bring some professionals in to help do the work. But we've converted three of our science labs there that weren't being used, it was used for storage, and it's going to be used for a community space for the teachers to collaborate. It looks beautiful, I've had the opportunity to tour every single one of our schools. The only school I haven't gone to do an official facilities tour is Dunahue and Ian White, and I have that on the schedule for, for Thursday. So, that you see is the pre-K rubber surface that we did. I wish we had a before pic, but what, what you see right there is so much better, and it's going to get a lot of use. The next one is, you can see the bathrooms, there were no partitions before in the Metcalf bathrooms, and the, the students had talked about that. And there's the ADA compliant ramp that we attached to the building, so that if we, so that it's wheelchair accessible. And then, the next picture is the science labs. Again, if I had a before picture, this doesn't look like much, but it's an amazing space, especially with the furniture set up, so teachers are, they can collaborate with each other. It's just a beautiful space compared to what it was. You open the door before, it was, you just see a bunch of equipment that used, piles of, of junk, and we really took some, made something out of nothing there, and I want to thank the facilities team.
Put a chemistry lab in there.
Yeah.
That is fierce, not yet.
And that is the conclusion of our presentation, my presentation. I do just want to say that we're welcoming back our teachers tomorrow for professional development. I want to wish them luck, I want to let them know that I'm here, I'm listening, I want to support you, and, you know, we're going to get through this together. And I'm super excited to welcome back our students who start on Monday, who many of, many of them haven't been in, in person in school for over seventeen months. So, we're, we're really happy to start the school year. Hopefully, the weather cooperates with us. I walked the schools today, it was nice and cool. So, everyone cross your fingers, let's not get any hundred-degree weather next week. I also want, we, we did have a, a new staff orientation on Friday. We were able to be in person with a hundred and twenty of our new staff, an amazing turnout. They, they were all really engaged in, in, in orientation. And then, I, I was able to talk one-on-one with a lot of them. So, to those new employees out there, I just want to thank you for choosing Holyoke Public Schools. It means a lot to me on a personal, both on, on a professional and personal level. It's a great place to work, and, and we're here to support you.
Thank you very much. I have two questions. Mr. Wellin?
Real quick, thank you for the presentation. I think Mrs. Williams has some questions on the Metcalf bathroom.
Oh, I didn't, I'm, I apologize. Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Well, I just wanted to know what has been done. Have they finished with this?
Oh, it was on the slide.
Oh, oh, well, we're all set.
Yeah, they put up the partitions.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I was daydreaming.
You want to show?
It was partitions, it was mirrors, we upgraded the sinks, we lifted, you know, the toilets were really low because it was made for younger kids, so we raised the toilets. We, there were some clear, cleaning supplies that they wanted to see, we did that. We painted throughout the basement, I mean, I, you know, I was part of the tour before we decided to rent this space, and, and the space is amazing compared to what, what it was before we took it. They're doing the final touches, the staff up there are painting the floor, it's going to look beautiful.
I'm happy to hear that. Thank you, sir.
Awesome. Mr. Colomar?
I'd just like to thank Superintendent Soto and the entire staff of the, from teachers, administrators, custodians, anyone. During the summer, I walk around and I look at these buildings, and they've done an excellent job for opening school next week, Metcalf School, and for years, I've been looking for cleaning up that, the stage. They've sanded down the stage, they've, they've done everything to the stage and made it beautiful. They either use it as a, a stage, or use it as a classroom, whatever, but it's back in the condition where it should have been for many, many years. Going to show Morgan School, what a beautiful job. It was, really, the area wasn't suited for students to be going out there and playing in that area. But by removing all that rock and stone on the sidewalks, that were hazards to our students and our staff, they've done an excellent job. So, you know, it's not just one group, it's everyone working together to get this done. The principals arranging to move furniture from certain areas to get it done, the custodians being able to move in at a certain time to get this done. I really think that we ought to start praising and thanking these staff for everything they've done here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Colomar. So, there's no further communications and reports, right? Business, there was none. Ongoing business, none. So, moving to announcements, I have, one is a question. The first one, it's for the start of school, are you doing a welcome back? Or what? I know you don't want too many people gathered.
Yeah, we, we did talk to the Board of Health about that today. As long as people are outside, we can certainly organize welcoming back. We are going to do a convocation, but it's going to be virtual. With everything going on, I don't think it's a good idea to put every single one of our staff members in one gym. There's, you know, so, so convocation, we're going to be doing it at one o'clock on Friday, and it's going to be virtual. But as far as welcoming schools back, welcoming students back, we, we could be outside and, and welcome them back safely, for sure.
So, can you send us, like, Sam, if you could send us, sorry, Ms. Garcia, if you could send us dates, well, like, each school, what time? And then, if we can just reply which one we plan on, on going to, to welcome students back. So, we don't have, like, four people all in one place, everybody's dying to go to Metcalf, right? We want to make sure that we're, everybody has some, some show of support, so all schools, including the transitions as well. They're always there for us. I love... as well. They're always there for us. I love their cotton candy. Great job. They do. They know me, I want my cotton candy. Mr. Kishane?
I have an announcement if.
Yeah, yeah, and then I'll make the other announcement. Go ahead.
Okay, so as many of you are aware, I'm not running for Ward Seven School Committee this year. And if you're not aware, I wanted to let you know that I wasn't running. I want to thank the citizens of Ward Seven for the opportunity to serve them and for the support that they've given me for the last six years. I want to let you all know that to serve with this committee has been an honor and a privilege. We accomplished a great deal as a school district and as a committee since the start of receivership six years ago when I came on. And and of course, we're doing a great deal of work prior to that. But things changed dramatically with receivership. And I think together, we've aided, in some cases led, significant changes. From increasing matriculation rates achieved through the multiple pathways to graduation, increasing college opportunities through dual enrollment programs, the extension of our Spanish immersion programming to Ian White School and beyond now, the addition of pre-K to our elementary schools, the great progress that we've made to building, finally building a new middle school, not to mention the salvaging of two graduation classes, Mildred and Ms. Burks, what you did for our graduating classes the last two years was amazing. What everyone's done to navigate a worldwide pandemic's impact on the school district has been really fantastic. And I credit this success to our decision to work with the receivers that have been appointed to these positions. Instead of campaigning against what was happening, we 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 were on the way instead of being in the way. And I think all the things that I mentioned above could not have happened without all of our commitment to working with our receivers. Dr. Reich was in place when I came on board, and he was extremely approachable, and I want to thank him. I don't know that he watches every meeting anymore.
He does.
Sure, he does.
All the way to Anthony Soto, and this is the closest to local control that we've had in six years, is having our Hoyoker at the helm. And I really appreciate you, Anthony, through all the things that you did. I remember busing problems, et cetera, and you you helped us navigate through a lot of difficult times. This was a very difficult decision for me. I was approached by someone who had a, was in my my position years ago with a daughter and a son attending the high school. And I thought back to the reasons that I ran so long ago. And I remember one particular instance in my first couple of months on school committee. And I was taking my son to the guidance department at Hoyoke High School. And as I walked in, I saw that they had the same exact copier that I just bought for my office, and I was thrilled. I couldn't believe they had a high-speed scanner that could handle a hundred pages. And I was like, oh, this is, this is fantastic. And I sat down and only to find out that they hadn't been using that machine for eighteen months. It was not connected to the server. And I spent the next two weeks making sure that that happened. And it was a small thing at the time, and I felt good about it as a parent. I saw it, did something about it. But when I see, after six years of being with you all, the gravity of that moment, you know, we had these kids for thirteen years possibly, pre-K to twelve, and to watch them trip on the way out the door because their guidance counselor couldn't get a scholarship application out, or they couldn't get a college application out, after all the work that went into it. It really made me think about how important it was to have parents that we have on school committee that we've had in the past who had children in the school, how important it was to have a balance, and how important it was for me to give somebody else an opportunity. Looking back, it's clear to me that 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 was something that I was able to do as a parent. And I also got involved with the school improvement councils. And that's something that was buried in our in our information tonight. But I noticed that at the close of 2021 school year, Ian White regularly had their school improvement council meeting. And this year, all principals and face coordinators have been charged with recruitment and launch of school improvement councils by the end of quarter one. I felt very happy when I read this today. And it made me, again, believe that we had a local person who was hearing what we said, even though we have done everything that I mentioned without casting one binding vote. All that work happened because we were able to work with our receiver. And that's something that I I look to all of you as having contributed a great deal toward it, and I'm very happy about. When we talk about gaining back local control, and I think about some of the things that came up at this meeting and past meetings, I think it's important that it's not just the state that is in control, and we have to look at all the outside influences that want to tell us what positions to fill, what programs to have. We always have to do what's best for our school district. And I think that we all know what's best. And so I I stand behind decisions that Anthony has made. And I think that we all need to look at the makeup of our schools and how we want to be as inclusive as I think we're becoming as we develop the programming that we're we're developing. Spanish immersion is one of my favorite programs, because I've lived in the city for forty years, and I've never seen that kind of programming where we don't separate and try to educate everybody twice in different languages. We bring everyone together. And that's what I think this, I think that's what this school committee represents. Lastly, I just want to thank Devon and Mildred. And I only say, Devon, you were the vice chair when I started, and Mildred, you've you've done an incredible job. I can't imagine being in charge of of us the way you have been in a more difficult time. We're in receivership, and then a worldwide pandemic. And here you were, helping us keep our heads above water, asking all the hard questions, and 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 getting us through. So I thank you for always being here. I thank you for always being prepared and for your professionalism. You've been wonderful to work with, as have you all. And I and I have to say, I don't want to hear poems from anyone outside the city of Hoyoke. I only want to hear Rosalie. So thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity you gave us.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Mr. Kishane. And you still have the rest of these these months to be with us. I'll tell you that.
I do not intend to skip a meat.
And if there's one thing that I'm definitely going to treasure, is our spelling bee competition, right, of Run DMCs, okay?
Classic photo, classic photo.
Me, you, and Mr. Burks. Ms. Tensley-Williams?
I'm going to make this quick. Anthony, we thank you so much. We love you. We're glad to have you aboard, and we will be helping you. And I I wrote a poem, I'm going to make it quick, dedicating it to all the children in Hoyoke. It's entitled Coloring Books. Have you ever wondered why coloring books are so much fun? It could be when you color. The crayons do not run. Coloring books have so many pictures and lots of things to do. The crayon colors that you use, they are so pretty, too. Coloring books come in all sizes. Some are large and some are small. When you finish coloring the pictures, you may frame them for your wall. When coloring time is over and you put the books away, put them where you can find them to color another day.
Sorry, that was beautiful, Ms. Tensley. You're going to have to be writing and calling Mr. Kishane when he leaves us.
Well, I wrote nine poems. The pandemic didn't slow me down, so, but I'm trying to.
So you have one for next month?
I'm trying, yes. I'm trying to copyright it now. So I I got in touch with the Library of Congress in DC, so.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you, sweetheart.
And the last other thing, I just want to let everyone know, we will be scheduling a school committee retreat. So Ms. Garcia is going to be sending out some dates so that we can go ahead. And I'll hold a poll and see. Now, one of the things that I was looking at is for November. So that way, any new members, you know, I may be here, I may not be here, but they should be a part of it as well. Okay, so once those dates are out, I'll send them. Only the new members wouldn't have a choice on dates, sorry. But that way we'll set it up, because new things are going to be coming in 2022. Mr. Collmar?
Going to get moving on the proposal by the mayor to.
Yep, as I'm walking out the door, I'm thinking of the next step, and I'll be reaching out to every one of you. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That I heard. And abstain, none?
Were adjourned as of 9:34 PM. Thank you, everyone, for coming.